Des Moines City Council Meeting, please join us for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so please sign in. It's our understanding that Renee will attend and then Russ is at a meeting in the city of Ankeny, but he'll try to call in when he gets done up there, so.
You're there, Renee?
Okay. I guess maybe we'll do roll call, Ryan?
Yeah, we do not ask.
We'll do roll call.
Okay.
We'll start with Hardman.
Present.
Hudson.
Present.
Trevillion.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
And we know Trimble is absent for the time being, so we have four members present.
Okay, Ryan, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Your Honor.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Move approval.
Second. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The agenda is approved. Item two, Citizens Forum. I wanted to remind everyone that's in the present in the council chambers and joining us on phone, make sure the folks on the phone, you press star six to unmute yourself when we get to public hearings. So with that, Citizens Forum is the time for anyone in the audience who'd like to address the city council on any item that's not part of public hearings or new business tonight. All right, here, no one will move on to Mayor, City Council, City Manager reports. Matt?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
All right, Kevin?
Nothing at this time.
Greg?
Yeah, we just have two projects on the consent agenda that might be considered relatively minor, but for the folks in Ward Two, I just wanted to highlight that 88th Street, the plan is to get that paved. It's pretty much on the, at the farthest western end of our city, but it'll be a major north-south thoroughfare as we continue to develop west, and having that entire street paved is going to make a big difference. So I'm enthusiastic support, enthusiastically supportive of that. And also a left-hand turn lane on Ashworth onto Prairie View, just west of the interstate. I think that's going to be a wonderful project, too. And it's just the little things that we do as a city that I think make a big difference. So I wanted to thank the city staff for making those things a priority. So, and that is it, Mayor.
Okay, Renee?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, I would like to first of all, say that I was so proud to be at the opening. Sally, you chose one of the hottest days of the year of the boathouse, and I think that many of us were there. Congrats to Sally and all of the Parks and Rec team and the Parks and Rec Board members. That is a phenomenal addition to the Raccoon River Park. It is wonderful. So I just even saw on Facebook all throughout the weekend, people getting out there and enjoying being outdoors, physically distancing and doing what they need to do. So kudos to Sally and her team for a wonderful quality of life initiative for West Des Moines, right?
Yeah.
It was great. And Mayor went out there paddleboating with his wife and survived and came back safe. So everything was a good day. So thank you so much. I do want to say that I did, since the last time we got together, have the pleasure of attending the West Des Moines Library Board of Trustees meeting, their annual meeting, actually, and then they have it with the foundation, the library foundation. And it's a wonderful foundation that really supports the work of our great library. So I want to thank Daryl and his team for all that they've been doing to keep our beautiful asset available and accessible to the degree that they can. You know, the library is operating effectively with protocols currently in place and that they plan to, you know, kind of keep status quo throughout the summer through August and reassess when the school district finalizes their plans for having students either back in class or virtual. The Valley Junction kiosk due to COVID, the installer, which is Invision Ware, is going to postpone that a little bit, push that back to early August, and the staff have agreed to that. So we're still going to have a kiosk there in Valley Junction, but that's been pushed back. There's been some new officers that have been elected to the library trustee board. Mary Brooks is our president, Joel Paul Peter is our vice president, and Carol Grant is the secretary. So wonderful committed individuals that will take the helm of leading the trustee board. I do also want to give us some statistics here because, you know, the library is, again, as I said, a phenomenal asset. So I just want to give you that there are folks in our community that can't get out to do the library. There were homebound deliveries in the month of July, 57 of those. That means we're reaching out to folks that want to use the libraries but aren't able to do that. I think that's a much value-added service. The gate count for last fiscal year was 33,343, up 5.67%, even with part COVID. So that means that people are really utilizing our library and we're, you know, again, a valuable resource to the development and learning of adults and students. And so circulation was up 4.66%. Last fiscal year was 76,088 compared to 65,0216. So Daryl is back. Daryl, you want to raise your hand. I want to thank you and your team for all that you're doing for the library. I used to visit the library almost every single day, but life has changed a little bit and I can't do that. But the library is a sacred place for me. I love checking out books and sitting there and reading. And renovation has gone well and the library is being utilized well. So thank you so much.
Okay. I know Tom's joining us by teams. Tom, any city manager report?
No report today, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. All right, item four is the consent agenda. Are there any items that any council member wants to pull tonight?
Four Q.
Okay.
I want to...
Four F1 and 2, please.
Okay.
And I wanted to not pull R, but comment on R.
Okay. So why don't I get a motion for all of them except for F1 and 2 and Q?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Renee, you wanted to comment on R before we take the two pulled items?
Oh, sure. Four R deals with the resolution on encouraging the wearing a mask during the COVID. And I really realize, and I've heard that, a lot of issues around masks, but I know that this resolution sets forth the expectation that we encourage masks. And I also respect that people feel differently. I try to follow the science. And we also know that COVID is on the rise here in Iowa. We know that wearing face masks when you're within a certain distance of another person helps minimize the risk to that other person. So I just want to say on record that I am strongly in support of doing everything we can to have people wear masks. I wear masks to respect you and I want you to wear masks to respect me. And so I know I get all kinds of letters and I appreciate that. That's what you're supposed to do. You're supposed to write your elected official. So I think this resolution is a good first step. I wish it was a little stronger personally because I think that's how we're going to get ahead of this. And again, I know there's some people in opposition and I respect your right to have that view, but I just want, because I get calls, I stand that we should have strong language to be wearing masks. City employees in the building should be wearing masks to protect each other and get ahead of what we're dealing with this pandemic.
Okay. Item four, F1 and 2, approval of purchase and implementation of IT equipment. Matt?
Yeah, Mayor, you know, obviously we got the packet on Friday and over the weekend I was looking at it and roughly $750,000 in expenses for new servers and storage. And so it caused some concern for me, just given that I've done a lot of work in this, in this space. And so I called Joe this afternoon and I appreciate it. He got right back to me. And my question was, you know, have we explored, I mean, we've got such a huge presence of Microsoft in our community. Have we explored, like the state has and others, perhaps working with Microsoft, or obviously Google's large investment and announcement a couple of weeks ago, have we explored, I mean, their largest data center in the world is an hour and a half down the road in the state of Iowa. Have we explored potentially, working with them? We haven't explored those options. He emailed me and I appreciate the information he shared with me about how we could explore it. So I'm just wondering if we can defer this so we can explore potential savings. I mean, I know that these, these cloud providers are just massively scaling because of everything in the pandemic, remote access and security. I'm just wondering, you know, if we have the time. What I don't know is whether we have the time to do that. If we do, I'd like to defer till we can get that information.
Fair enough. I guess, Tom, you or Joe, you want to respond to the time pressures we have on these items?
Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Joe, IT Director, City of West Des Moines. I don't believe we can. And I, Matt, I sent you a little bit of kind of high-level research on what the Microsoft Cloud costs. And there's various inputs that we don't have. That's in the email, but, you know, we don't have information on how often every file is accessed or written, or all the, all the user executions of, of uses of that data. I don't want to get too technical, but basically what we know is we need the storage. We're at a significant data risk now to where the storage system has needed replaced for the last few years due to varying factors. That's not been accomplished. And we're essentially out of storage. We're also at a point where if we experience equipment failure, which is very possible since we're a few years past the end of support, we potentially have the risk of large data losses such as camera video. So this has been something we've known about. It's just been, you know, it's been very difficult from a staffing perspective to get it done until now. So I would respectfully ask that we do not defer this.
Okay.
If I could ask a question, too, and maybe Joe can speak to this, and I appreciate, you know, on both sides here. I just remember not too long ago that we went through a hack, okay? And it kind of shut West Des Moines down for a little bit, except for critical issues. And staff were not accessible and they're whatever. And so I don't know whether this is a result of trying to make sure that we're staying on top of things to avoid that. And if so, you know, I think we have to invest in what we need to make sure that we're not vulnerable and at risk. So is that a part of that, Joe? I am not a very technologically savvy person. I know enough to do Zoom and, and WebEx and GoTeams and others, but is this all a part of the strategy and structure that we all talked about in trying to make sure that we are secure technological and we're not postponing risk and wavering against risk and trying to make sure that we've got technology that supports this huge enterprise?
Yeah, so Renee, I can, I guess I can answer this a couple of different ways. It, it isn't really a security initiative, but it's very much a risk initiative.
Okay.
You know, we, we have, so I've been with the city a little over two years. You know, we, we've had a lot of technology that's years past its maintenance or end of life. And we've, we've recently added staff to be able to support that technology. If we look at the servers, the storage, all the network equipment, these are very high-dollar items. We've typically had one or two people supporting that. Today, we have five or six people supporting it. So we're doing a lot of catch-up, and that's why some of these big-ticket items are coming due all at once because they're way, way behind on, on their support, which creates a lot of risk for the city. It doesn't necessarily put us, at least this storage, as a security risk, but it certainly, it certainly adds a risk of data loss, which can impact, well, it would impact our operations. That's where our dispatch center is housed, and so there's certainly public safety risk in that aspect, so.
This is Tom, hadn't, we do have money set aside for this expenditure, and I understand where you're coming from, Councilman McKinney. Internally, we had the same discussions of, this seemed kind of a sudden expense, but when you think of that, part of the impact of the hack and the, we're, we had, all hands had to be on deck and that, it put us behind and looking at some of these other issues. And then another issue that people may not think about is the storage of cameras for the police department. All the, this takes tremendous amount of storage capacity. And because the courts have been behind because of COVID, we're having to store this longer than we would normally do. So with all these factors in place, those are so important to have, those, for the police department recordings, we can't also risk losing those or not having them because they prove to be very important in numerous cases.
Okay, so Tom or Joe, to Matt's point, though, share with us briefly what the due diligence has been by the city to make sure that these solutions are the most, you know, financially responsible solutions. I think that's what the question that we're trying to get to.
Sure. So at a high level, the analysis we've done, so we did an RFP for bids on different on-premise solutions, so non-cloud solutions, which is what this is. We have found that the cloud, the cloud solutions are very expensive. So just as a point of reference, just to put our dispatch center, Westcom, in the cloud, the quote from that vendor was eight to 900,000 per year. This storage system is roughly $600,000 over five years, and we own it. Obviously, with the cloud, we don't own anything. So that's some of the due diligence. We, we find the cloud analysis. There are several ways they charge you. And, you know, in my estimation, it's, it's extremely difficult to predict what type of costs you're going to get. With our cloud storage right now, being SharePoint, we get a lot of cost overruns. They're much smaller in scale, but it's very difficult to predict what the costs are. So in short, we've done RFPs, extensive vendor research with these, with some of the competing vendors. The cloud part is kind of light, and it's been very difficult to get that information because it's, it's just extremely complex. If you look at the way it's computed, you essentially have to write them a blank check, in my view. So that's kind of where we're at. We went more the predictable route of something we own and we then know what the costs are. Last thing I'll say is, I, I did kind of a cross-reference on the Microsoft site with the information we have, and it came out to be about $600,000 over five years, which is the total cost of this solution we're proposing. I think it's 592. So we're, we're very close. It's just that I can't fully validate whether the cloud scenario is really accurate. I had to go with the Microsoft defaults, so.
So, Joe, I appreciate, I appreciate that information. So it sounds like we did an RFP for non-cloud services, or what you refer to as on-prem or on-premises, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Did we do an RFP for cloud services?
No, and that's the, that's the difficult part because we have to have the inputs. So if you, I don't want to get too deep here, but the, on the Microsoft site, there's all this criteria of how often is your data read, written, is it manipulated? You know, you have all this upstream and downstream, you know, processes that they bill you on. So unless you, unless you have an extensive history of how much each file has been executed or manipulated, which we don't, that's getting very, very complex, that we're not in a position to really calculate, we really don't know what the cost is going to be. That's really the problem with cloud.
But it's fair, we could look at other cities of similar sizes that have gone to the cloud, found cloud to be more scalable, more reliable, more secure, and to see what potential costs would be. Did we get a quote from, from Amazon or Google or Microsoft to do anything like this, other than your, your visit to the website this afternoon?
We had some conversations with Microsoft, and it, it really boiled down to several different ways. They, they billed the entire cost out, and, and it was just very difficult to pin down a very clear number. But the complexity around the ambiguity of the billing kind of dissuaded us from that, as well as just some very large price tags. I'll reference the Westcom price tag again, where that's just Westcom and we're, we're approaching a million dollars per year. So we're, you know, just Westcom is literally, you're talking several times more money over five years just for Westcom. So we just didn't see that there was, there's a lot of reason to dive into that deeper.
Fair enough. Well, I, I appreciate, I mean, obviously, my, my concern here is making sure we're, we're doing the right thing by the taxpayer dollars. Also, security, we have our own on-prem and we had a problem with it already. So we're going to continue on-prem, which is a concern for me. I have personally been involved with other activities where I've seen the state of Iowa and other government entities save dollars by going to the cloud as opposed to having your own security. I've been to some of these large data centers where the security is absolutely incredible. I don't know what our security is for our services, but I can imagine trying to rival what these large businesses offer is going to be difficult. You know, what I hear Joe say, and what I got in an email here, is that he plugged in a certain amount into the Microsoft site this afternoon. It gave out 612,000 over five years, so we have very similar costs. So I'm hearing we have very similar costs, and that's just based upon a, a visit to a website. I have concern about it. I definitely do not want to compromise any ability for our services to lapse or not provide service, whether it's storage of, of security video or other footage. But at this point, I just, I have a lot of concern and I'd, you know, personally need more information to support this.
Well, I guess, Tom or Joe, can we continue for two weeks? And can you guys ask Microsoft? Because I know, and I'm not suggesting they would do this for the city, but they donated their software to the West Des Moines incubator when it started. To Matt's point, I don't know if they're, because of the relationship we have with Microsoft, if they would have a solution for us that would be, you know, more advantageous than simply going to their website and trying to figure out how they would price anybody that would show up there and try to figure out the cost.
That is the, that is the approach they pushed us to when we met. It was just on that site. I'm happy to meet back with them. And obviously, if that's the, the direction of the council, that's what we'll do. I, I certainly want to mention it, it is very urgent. We're essentially out of storage now. And I know we've kind of, you know, we've kind of put ourselves behind the eight ball a bit, but, but I'm, I'm happy to reach out to them. I, I do want to emphasize, we, we, I don't believe we have the, the information to even paint a clear picture of the cost going forward. I, nor do we know how much people will access that data in, in the use cases. So unless you really know the amount of accessing the data you'll do, or the amount of data you'll send and retrieve from the site, you really have no way of knowing what your costs are going to be. It's, it's whatever the users do. How much are people accessing body cam videos or security footage or sending that stuff? And, and we won't know that. That's, that's really not possible, fine, because we don't know what the users are going to do.
So that would mean no other city could have a cloud solution? Because no, no other city could come up with that information either.
They, they can in retrospect, but they likely won't, they won't have clear costs. It will, at least in this situation with Microsoft, it will, it will vary based on how much they access the data.
So if, hey, Joe, I'll go ahead, Renee.
You go ahead.
I was going to say, if, if we did delay this for two weeks, what actions, what specific actions would be taken over those two weeks?
That's a good question. We would probably have a couple meetings with Microsoft to, to make attempts at getting more clarity around that. Yeah, I, I don't know, yeah, I guess it, it really just depends what we're looking for. But we, we still need to have on-premise storage, no matter what. So whether we want to more aggressively go to the cloud, there's, there's a lot of apps that you, you can't put in the cloud. So, so we can explore that further, but we, we will always have an on-premise storage system for the foreseeable future. I mean, so it, I guess, I guess, Greg, I'm, I can get more information. I'm just not really sure where that, where that eventually goes to. We would still have a hybrid model either way. We may just end up purchasing a smaller storage solution here on site, but I don't know what we would go after, to answer your question.
Well, it'd probably be helpful to get more information on the RFP process, who proposed on it, and maybe some other, what some other cities are doing, just to get people a little bit more comfortable. Because this, Joe, looks like it's at least a, what, five, six-year solution?
Yes. It's quoted over five years.
Okay, Renee?
I just, I really appreciate listening to the dialogue, and I really appreciate, too, what Joe is trying to accomplish as the IT Director for the city of West Des Moines with an $80 million budget, and trying to make sure that we have the right storage and all of that. So I, if we delay it two weeks, I, I'm praying and hoping it's not longer than that because I'm hearing him say, "We don't have storage." And I'm hearing Tom say that, you know, the police use up a lot of storage. And if we get one situation where we don't have stuff stored and something happens and we say, "Well, we, we don't have storage," that's not a good excuse. That's not a good excuse. I'm nervous about this risk. So if that's what the will of this body wants to do for two weeks, I want to go on record saying, no longer than two weeks, and the risk is great, that we are totally out of storage. And we are city of West Des Moines with lots of IT needs. It's risky. And so I'm real nervous about that.
Hey, Joe, this is Kevin. I've got a question for you on, if this gets approved tonight, when do you see this, these servers getting installed? What's the, what's the turnaround?
Yep. So, so Kevin, just to clarify, this is, this is just the storage. There's the server piece, which is separate. But this storage, we actually have a tentative plan here to implement it in about the next week to 10 days. The police department currently retains body cam video for 180 days. There is an urgent request due to COVID to retain it for a year. And that's because the court cases aren't able to get in as urgently as they, as they, as they used to, used to do that. So, so we're not able to honor that immediately because we don't have space to retain it and double the storage. So right now, the PD video uses up about a fourth of the space. So our intent is to, I mean, do that immediately if it's approved, because we, we can't retain more video like they're asking for right now.
Okay, so if we delay this action for two weeks, that ultimately puts this, the installation of this out three weeks to a month. And I'm not comfortable with that at all.
Yeah, this is obviously quite a problem. We, our current setup doesn't scale, and that's part of why I'm suggesting we look at the cloud. We apparently are handcuffed and don't have any capacity to do anything. We get an agenda on Friday and we're asked to approve it today, and we don't have, we're, we don't have the ability to even get more information.
Right. Which is not fair to put...
Matt, this, this solution is scalable. You know, the, the solution that's in place currently is, is seven or eight years old. I mean, it's something the city's had for a very long time. I don't believe it's ever been upgraded, but the, the new solution, it's just as simple as popping in a pizza box-sized piece of storage and you're off and running. I know that's still not as simple as the cloud, where you do that, you know, virtually, but, but that, that is something we took into consideration. You know, the IT department, literally, in looking at these solutions, we spent hundreds of hours, I mean, of total staff time, I mean, literally dozens of discussions around it. So at least in terms of the viability of this solution meeting our needs, that's, that's been as analyzed as thoroughly as the capability of our staff can go, in my view.
Yeah, but Joey, you can't tell that from the information we have. I think that's what people are asking for. And I guess, you know, to the extent, Tom, in the future, it's probably not fair to the elected officials to have items like this that show up on an agenda and nobody has any chance to get any additional information.
Right. I hear you.
The, hey, Joe, this is Greg again. I think one thing that would be really, really helpful, I know I've only been on the city council for seven months now, but in the first few months, there was a lot of aftermath for the attack in December. And so I know so much of the focus IT-wise, but I don't know what a roadmap for the city IT-wise for the next 10 or 20 years looks like exactly. But how well does this specific piece fit in with the long-term 10-year, 20, 20-year plan of what the city needs? Because I think what Councilman McKinney is talking about is when he talks about scale, when he talks about almost, does this fit well with the long-term? Or is this almost a Band-Aid? I don't know if that's exactly what you mean, Councilman McKinney. I think there's a couple of concerns that you're speaking up to. But I think what would be, and this is not me placing blame at all, this is just me not having a good idea as elected official on what the next 10 to 20 years and building up to what those 10 or 20 years from now look like, considering the growth of the city, considering technological needs that probably can't even be foreseen right now. But I guess, so that's my question. probably can't even be foreseen right now. But I guess, so that's my question. How well does this piece fit in with the tentative 10 or 20 year plan?
Yeah, that's a good question, Greg. I, I think, I think our mindset right now is a lot of catch up work. So I'll say there's, you know, coming into the department, there's a lot of technology that really hadn't been maintained in, in probably 10 years. And our mindset the last year and, and mindset will be the next couple of years to just catch up. I mean, and that's what this stuff is, is just to get it current. But I'd say longer term, the very long term, I mean, probably five to 10 years out, we, there's, there's likely more of a migration to the cloud. But I think as long as we have a desire to retain massive chunks of video, when it comes, when we're talking body cams, and we're literally deploying several dozen video cameras, that's on the radar at the Recplex, various facilities. As long as we're doing that, I think it's still cheapest to do it onsite. So I don't know that that will change unless the desire to retain that security footage changes. But...
Well, I, I appreciate Renee's comments. I mean, I, we're not in a position to comply with existing law today is a problem. If we can't store things as a court orders us to do it for a year, that's a problem. And I'm not going to put our city in a further hole by suggesting that we continue to delay it. I, I will say though, I mean, for us to comment on what the cost is without really evaluating a cloud solution, I, it causes me concern. And I'd like to think that in the future, we could explore both on premises as well as off premises for, for security, for scalability. The pandemic hit, everybody went to Microsoft Teams, or Google meets, or Amazon Web Services, and they could scale immediately. And here we are sitting here, and we can't meet a court order. I like to think that, you know, in the future, if the court says, hold it for, you know, two years, you hit a switch and you're done. You don't have to go through this detailed analysis. So I appreciate the conversation. It obviously highlights a concern I've got. And, you know, I, I guess we move forward with it, but I have a lot of heartburn on it.
Okay, someone want to move 4F, one and two?
Move approval?
Second.
Call in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Those items are approved. Item 4Q, resolution approval of recommendation for funding upper story housing program. Kevin?
Yes, this request is to basically transfer what was recommended by the Due Diligence Committee on the Upper Story Housing Program Fund, to transfer the money that was recommended for 101 and 107 Fourth Street, there at Fourth and Railroad, that transferred that $825,000 for that project to a new project at 304 Fifth Street. My concern for this is, first of all, it's been sitting out there since November of 2018, when the Due Diligence Committee made the recommendation to award this money. It never came to city council because approval was never given to rezone on that property down at Fourth and Railroad to Historic Valley Junction Business District. So the building could be constructed. It's been sitting out there for just short of two years now. And now, um, the developer wants to, has requested, I guess, of city staff, and talking with him today, various city staff members have guided him that this would be acceptable, and the best way to go about it, in his words, that it would make the, satisfy the residents down on Fourth Street and Third Street that didn't want the project, to then put this project up in the 500 block, or 300 block of Fifth, which is already zoned Historic Valley Junction Business District. My concern, biggest concern for this is, how do you take money that was awarded for one project, and the developer never did anything with it, now all of a sudden, and what's been stated in this packet is that Mr. Cutler subsequently determined that the development at 107 Fourth Street was not viable at this location due to zoning challenges. So because he can't make it work down there, now he's going to take the money and move it up to a whole new area, which makes it a new project. It's a new address, new project. We should actually put the money back into, well, two things. One, either put it back into the Upper Story Housing Program, and put it back out for applications, seeing if there's other projects out there. Or, which maybe is the better thing to do, because of all the issues we've faced this year with COVID, is if he can't use the money on Fourth Street, then it just goes back into the general fund, and we put $825,000 into our fund. So we're not having to pick pennies together to make ends meet. But I, there's no way I can support, and I don't know how anybody can support, taking money from one project and putting it into another project when it never went through the Due Diligence Committee. There was no due diligence done on this. It went back to the Finance Administration Subcommittee, and they said, oh yeah, it's, it's good. I'm talking with Councilman Trimble today about this. He said, well, it's the same project. It's not the same project. It can't be the same footprint of the building, because the lot on Fifth Street's smaller than it is on Fourth Street. And two, it's a different address. So either one of those makes it a new project.
So Tom, I don't know if Christine or Clyde, or who may respond to it, but I guess Kevin's question is, how do we know this new project is the, is the one that would have received these monies if it went back through the competitive process?
This is Christine Gordon. I'm on the call.
Okay.
Okay. Um, well, I'm going to first, I want to speak to the concept of putting the money back into the general fund. This program is paid for through the Woodland Hills Housing Tiff. So if we chose to not fund this project, the money would go back into the Woodland Hills Housing Tiff to fund other affordable housing projects.
Okay. That's fine. I think we want to, we want to do affordable housing. So I guess the question is, how do we know Mr. Cutler's new project would be the one that would be awarded this if there was competition for the money?
The project, he was, the award at 101 Fourth Street would have scored exactly the same as the one at 304 Fifth Street. The project is the same number of units, affordable units. There's 11 affordable units that we're doing, with commercial on the first floor, residential on the second and third floor. So the project in that way is the same, and it would have received the exact same score through the Due Diligence Committee.
Okay, but we don't know if there's anybody else out there, property owners, that might apply for it if this fund is available.
I can't say for sure that no one else would apply. We've had two rounds of applications, and we've received applicants that are, we've received applications from two people, Scott Cutler and Ryan Wiederstein. Those are the only two that have ever applied for the funds.
Okay. But that doesn't mean that there wouldn't be somebody else out there. That's my point. We don't know. And again, I just don't know how you can just arbitrarily award it to a project that never applied for the funds. I just, I don't see it.
Well, Christine, what's, is, is this kind of an open enrollment? So we could say that if there was other people looking for similar projects, they'd be at least contacting the city to say, is there money available? Or will, will there be money available? So we're comfortable that there really isn't other, any other projects out there on top of this?
I do feel confident that there's not another developer out there that wants to do another development. We have, whenever we've done the, the two rounds that we have, we've sent a mailer to everyone who owns some property in Valley Junction in the area that this program serves, that has a second or third story that could be redeveloped or developed in some way. So we have notified everyone, and the only people that have responded to our two application rounds is Scott Cutler and Ryan Wiederstein.
Okay. I know, well, housing's been a huge priority of ours. So it seems like this is the right thing to do to me. And to be clear for this-
This is Russ.
Oh, go ahead, Russ.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Russ.
This is Russ. I'm just, I'm trying to multitask here. But, you know, this is a great project. The Due Diligence Committee already looked at this project. You know, I, I know this has probably been covered. It went through the process. The neighbors had an issue with the project. So now Mr. Cutler has found a, a new property. It's basically the same project. I believe it's 11 units, that the majority of them are going to be affordable housing. There's retail down below. We just thought in F and A that it made sense to take the funding that was already approved for the project and move it down the block. And, you know, we, we think it's a great project. We think it's going to do great things for the area. And so that was a decision that we made in, in F and A. Could we go back and, and start all over from scratch? Yeah, I suppose that's another way to go about this. But we just thought that this was a great project and that needed to move forward. So that's why we recommended what we did.
Okay, Greg?
Oh, I was just going to say, and to be clear, this is just the approval of the recommendation for funding. This is not an approval of the entire shebang, per se. This is just for the transfer of funding.
Yeah, I think Kevin's point though is, once you transfer the funding to this project, it's not available to any others.
Right.
I guess from what I'm hearing from Christine, the likelihood that there are any others out there is so remote, that we'd just be delaying inevitable. And we've been trying-
Delaying inevitable how long?
We would have to go through another funding round, I would say 90 to 120 days, to open it up, allow people time to put an application together, receive them, take due diligence, F and A, and then ultimately back to you. To Greg's point, this is approving the award, and directing staff to create the development agreement that then comes back to city council through public hearing.
But, and I guess this is a question for Mr. Cutler, because he's in the audience. Scott, that building is rented, right? Billy V's is there, correct? So it's not like, yeah, come on up. So you're not, it's not like he's going to be out any money, that he's got a building sitting there that's empty. I just, again, I just, I think the right path to go down is, because it clearly states in the application process that you have to, a project has to be for these funds. This project did not. That's my point. Scott, do you, I mean, what, and what does happen to Billy V's?
Yeah, so Scott Cutler, 304 Fifth Street, West Des Moines. I, I've completed three projects now in Valley Junction, and I'm proud of all those projects. We have the Winchester Cocktail Bar. We have the St. Kilda Restaurant. We have the Coffee Cats, the Cat Cafe. They got some press this weekend. My projects so far have added 11 upper story housing units to Valley Junction. Nice units. They're all 100% full right now. The Fourth and Railroad project is one that we definitely weren't sitting idle on. You're right, we started two years ago. Figuring out how to do redevelopment projects in Valley Junction has taken some time. We've had great help from city staff. And, and with the help of city staff and city council, we've completed some great projects so far. The 304 Fifth Street site is one that I bought. I, I live in the building, and have worked out, kind of pre-arranged a sunset with that tenant, so that it could be redeveloped, identified as a, a development site, kind of before purchasing it. Moving the funds from Fourth and Railroad to this site, it's the same legal entity that, that applied for the funds at Fourth and Railroad. There would be, you know, the applicant and the recipient of the funds at 304 Fifth Street. It's more or less actually the same building. We surprisingly have been able to kind of pick that building up and, and put it on this new site. Our motivation for moving the project is, back when we started at Fourth and Railroad, we thought we'd have a clear path forward to rezoning. And we're surprised by the pushback we got from neighbors. I, I, it's, it's my goal, as I live in Valley Junction, it's my goal to do good projects. I decided to kind of take a step back, and rather than try to push that project through, try to figure out an alternate option. After that P and Z meeting, we sat down with city staff and began to explore this, moving the project to 304 Fifth Street. And, yeah, it's, it's, I, I believe it'll be a quality project, and asking for your support.
And Scott, I'm not saying that you don't do quality projects. I've seen them. Okay? That's not my concern. It's just, I don't think it's right to take the money from one project and put it on a different project. But you, you didn't answer my question. Fourth and, or 304 Fifth Street is currently rented, correct, to Billy V's Restaurant?
It is, yeah.
So it's not like you've got money sitting there just going out the, out the window, and if, if we delay this, and we go back through the whole process again, that you're going to be, be out. Because you're making, obviously, you're making rent money off of Billy V's. So what would be the, the negative to pushing it back, other than you want to start now rather than six months?
I'm not sure that's really, in my opinion, a question that is, is relevant to what I'm asking for. I mean, I'm definitely, the Fourth and Railroad, that actually is vacant right now, and I am paying rent on it. This site, yeah, it, it's ready to be redeveloped. And like I said, I mean, I, you know, I don't know how, how, and this is really a question for you all, how, how project, I suppose, is defined. I mean, we, I said it's the same legal entity, it's more or less the same, you know, building. We, we just picked it up and moved it to a new site. We did that in response to, you know, feedback to receive from the neighbors. So we're, we're trying to do something that's, that's good, I guess. And if, if, you know, if this isn't supported, then we'll regroup and kind of figure out our, our next step.
No, it seems like from what Christine said, the fact that staff feels that this is appropriate, to council people at F and A supported, so they did as well. So I, I guess, one final question, Christine, if we did another round of funding, and Scott received this money, and we had an application that met all the criteria, do we have, can we, do we, or can we find additional funds to support that project? Because this makes it sound like it's mutually exclusive, either Scott's project or another one, which we don't know that there are any out there. But do we have funds available if we went through this in six months, and there's another great project to fund that one as well?
Not in the Woodland Hills Tiff at the moment. We would have to front it a little bit. It's a timing issue. You've committed quite a bit of money out of Woodland Hills Tiff, but very little has been drawn, just because of delays and getting development agreements done, and things have not started on construction on the other projects. So it's somewhat of a timing issue, and Tim would have to speak to it. But 825,000 right now is, is where you're at with this project. So I think it's a possibility, yes. You can absolutely consider that. If another one gets in, and you, and you like it, and you want to fund that, I think that's definitely an option.
Thank, uh, what Councilman Trimble had said, oh, go ahead. What Councilmember Trimble had said earlier, there's a couple of different directions to go on this. And I'm, and Russ and I are on F and A, and we, we approve this to go forward, and I'm still supportive of that. And, and I understand what Kevin's saying as well, of course. But at this time, I'm, I'm ready to move forward and approve this going forward. And I think there is one, one difference is, the city and the P and Z committee was the one who said no to the Fourth Street project. And so therefore, it's not like you were doing this for two years, and then you up and said, you know what, I don't want to go here. I think I'll, I'll go here. It's, it's the city directed you that this isn't the way to go. So-
City never voted on that.
Uh, the P and Z committee did.
P and Z, but the city council did not.
Oh, sure. But, uh-
Renee, you have a question that I'm going to ask for.
Yeah, yeah, I do. And I really appreciate hearing all of the discussions. And, and as Kevin has said, you know, there's, you know, you do have quality projects, and I've not heard anything to the contrary. And I do remember when the project on Fourth Street was trying to come to fruition. And one thing I know about you, Scott, is that citizens kind of had some pushback, and you listened. And you listened. And you didn't just force this, because you could have found some ways to work around it. So I'm in a dilemma here, because it's a project. I don't know how F and A defines project. It seems to be same legal entity, same building, moving at a block. I'm not hearing Christine or staff say that there is an overabundance of folks that might want to take a stab at this new location a month. So I'm in a quandary of what's best for the area, what's best for West Des Moines in general, and the extraordinary care that you took in the fourth project by saying, you know, citizens' voices matter. And I, I really don't want to create that much consternation over a development project. I don't, I don't hear a lot of those kind of discussions from developers. So, you know, this is a quandary. I understand what Councilman Trevillion is saying. It's now, how do we define project? Is this- Is this the same entity? Is it the same construct? Is it the same? All of those things are the same, but yet moving a block, knowing that based on what Christine is saying, likelihood that others might not be raising their hand to do this. I sit here, I sit here really wondering what is the greater good for that area in terms of redevelopment, which is hard in and of itself?
If we award this money, we are awarding it based on the developer that applied for the funding, not the project.
No, that's not, that's not true.
Yes, you are.
No, we're awarding it based on the project. And that's exactly, Renee, your point, the reason that F and A made the recommendation that we did is that it's substantially the same project. He was responding to the, um, residents that had an issue and he didn't, he didn't force it. He tried to figure out if it could work, it couldn't work. He found a new location for basically the same project. And so we thought it made sense since it's already been through the due diligence committee, which is a group of citizens that serve on this committee and they recommended funding for that. That, uh, and, and we haven't had the due diligence committee recommend a project that the council that didn't then support. Um, so it made sense for us, uh, for F and A to just simply have the money follow the project. It's, Kevin, you're talking about an address, not a project.
Yeah, absolutely, and that makes it a new project.
No, it, it doesn't.
I think we're ready, I think we're ready for that. Sorry, and then I'm gonna ask for a vote. That's fair.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, Nick Woggy, one thirty-six Third Street. Uh, I understand Cutler's position on this. It basically, it is probably gonna be the same project. But this is my tax dollar. And I hear one gentleman saying, oh, this is gonna get exactly the same score as the other one. I'm sorry, has anyone seen the plans? Are they out for public viewing? Because you're, what you're doing is you're making a decision to spend eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer money on a project unseen, unknowable, just the fact that I'm gonna move it from this lot to this lot. That's fine. I think that money needs to go back to the flush fund and re-divvy it out. Because this is exactly kind of the shady kind of backroom dealing that a lot of people are frustrated with. And, but again, it's tax dollars. And I think you guys need to be careful and do your due diligence and go back through the process. Thank you.
Well, Christine, let me clarify, this, this money from the Woodland Hills Tiff has to go to affordable housing projects only, correct?
That is correct, and this-
And these eleven units are all affordable housing?
They are, and it was the same eleven units that was proposed on Fourth Street. It's the exact same number of units. Again, it would have scored the same.
And we have no other affordable housing projects that have made an application other than Mr. Cutler and Mr. Widerstein?
Correct.
Is Mr. Widerstein's project getting funded?
We're working on the, it has been awarded, it was in January, and we're in the process of working on the development agreement and that should come to you in the next couple of months.
Okay, so if this money went back, it, it has to go for affordable housing. And so Mr. Cutler would reapply and if no one else applied, he would be awarded the money.
With your approval, yes.
Yep, okay. So, I mean, I want everyone to understand that this money is limited to affordable housing projects only. It can't be used for any other projects. So Matt, you had one final-
Yeah.
-questions or comment?
Yeah, well, so I was on this due diligence committee, uh, perhaps even during the relevant time as I look back here, it was in two thousand and eighteen. And so, you know, I, I think it's, it's important to me that it's the same legal entity that's involved. Uh, it's important to me that it's within the same district, that it's the same eleven, uh, units. And we're applying it under the same program. It's not like we went from the, uh, appliance regulatory, uh, fund to some other program that, that exists. And what I'm hearing from Christine is that it would be the same score. Now, I don't have committed to memory the criteria that, uh, we would have evaluated two years ago. But, um, I don't recall that the criteria specifically related to an address so much as it related to the type of project, to make sure you had affordable housing, to make sure that was, whatever those other criteria were. I guess my question, it would be for Dick or somebody, you know, on the legal side, is it fair to say that this is the same project? Or are we creating a situation where if there's somebody else out there that say, hey, that's not the same project, you shouldn't have awarded it?
I think somebody could always say that, but it's within the discretion of the council. And if you find enough factors or share some commonality, then it's not inappropriate to do that. I might also just add as an aside, I think Mr. Cutler did provide all the plans to the, to building at Fortin Railroad. So to say that somehow we've never seen the plans or they're in a backroom deal, that's, that's not correct.
But from legal's perspective, you're, you, you don't have heartburn over a legal problem?
No.
And it's not like we've got a whole bunch of other affordable housing projects down in Valley Junction that are waiting to be funded. There are no other ones. So it seems to make sense to award this one, reopen the application. If we get another affordable housing project in the next six months or nine months and we think it's viable, we'll figure out through Tim when we can get the thing funded. We'd want every one of these projects, I think. Okay, someone want to move, uh, four Q?
Ryan, do we have to sign in since I was able to join the meeting now? Do we have to sign back in before we can vote?
Or just roll call?
We just did roll call.
Yeah, we just did roll call, Russ.
Got you, got you.
Okay. So someone want to-
So move?
Or is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, any abstentions? Okay, it's approved four to one. Item five, old business. Um, item five A, the council's being asked to defer that to the August seventeenth city council meeting.
Move deferral.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Items, uh, deferred. Item five B, the Wilder Pines, one thousand and eleven hundred South Sixtieth Street, establish a plan unit development for single-family residential development, the Pines LLC. This is an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption. And there was one non-substantive change to clarify rear yard setbacks to the first reading. Need a motion for the second reading.
Move consideration, second reading.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Aye.
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 Oh, sorry. Okay, Ryan.
Five yes, in order to amend the official zoning map in the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, twenty nineteen by amending Title Nine zoning, Chapter Nine Plan Unit Development District pertaining to PUD District Regulations and Guidelines.
Move approval, second reading.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Second reading's approved. Need a motion for the third rea-, uh, and adoption final form.
Move waiver, third reading and adoption final form.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, item five C, Talons Reach Northwest and Southwest corner of Stagecoach Drive and eighty-eight Street. Amend the plan unit development to change residential setback standards for parcel G. Mill Ridge Homes LLC, this is an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption. There are no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration of the second reading.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Ryan?
Five yes, in order to amending the Talons Reach Plan Unit Developments, modify regulations pertaining to PUD parcel G.
Move approval, second reading.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Move the waiver, third reading, adopt a final form?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's approved. Item five D, amendment number eight to amended and restated Mills Parkway Urban Renewal Area, Sub District Eight. City initiated, this is an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption. There are no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration of, uh, second reading.
Second.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Ryan?
Five yes, in order to amending ordinance numbers thirteen eighty-four, fifteen sixty, seventeen forty, eighteen hundred, eighteen twenty-four, twenty fourteen, twenty seventy-two, and twenty-three fourteen, providing that general property taxes levying collected each year on property located within the amended Mills Parkway Urban Renewal Area in the city of West Des Moines, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans. Money is advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the amended Mills Parkway Urban Renewal Area.
Move approval of the second reading.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, second reading's approved.
Move to waive the third reading, adopt a final form?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, it's adopted. Item five E, vacation of a portion of southeast Moffett Lake Road right away, city initiated. This is also is an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption. There are no changes from the first reading.
Move to consideration of the second reading?
Is there a second?
Okay.
Questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Ryan?
Five yes, in order to the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, vacating as public right away a portion of Moffett Lake Road.
Move waiver at the third reading.
I need, uh-
Oh, I'm sorry, moves, approval, second reading.
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Second reading's approved.
Move waiver, third reading, approve and final form.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that is adopted as well. Item six, public hearings, we have a number of them tonight. Item six A, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Fox Ridge, west of Fox Valley and south of Veterans Parkway and southeast Adams Street. Amend comprehensive plan, land use map, and zoning map to enable single-family residential, medium-density residential and parkland uses initiated by Charles I and Ruth Colby National Trust. This was continued from the July twenty, twenty twenty city council agenda. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July third, twenty twenty, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
The Plan and Zoning Commission, by a vote of five yes with two absent, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the comp plan amendment and rezoning request. And there were also two, uh, correspondences received that were included with the council communication.
All right, uh, so now would be the time for anyone in the audience that'd like to address the city council on item six A. And I'm gonna first start with anyone that's present in the council chambers and then I'll ask for anyone on the phone. So is there anyone in the council chambers tonight that wants to address the council on item six A? All right, seeing no one, I'll ask if there's anyone on the phone that wants to address the city council on item six A. And if you do, please, um, press star six to unmute yourself. Okay, hearing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. The first item is a resolution to approve the- Sorry, is there someone, someone want to address the council on six A?
Yeah, sorry, I hit star six on my phone, but-
Can you give us your name and your address?
Yes, sir. Seth Moulton, twenty-eight seventy-four Northwest Eighty-Six Place, Ankeny, Iowa. Uh, representative for the developer, D.R. Horton. Uh, just wanted to make a comment regarding the, uh, the proposed rezoning. Uh, we spoke, we had a neighborhood meeting with the, uh, the neighbors. I think it was a very productive meeting, uh, with them. Uh, one thing at, at P and Z, uh, that was brought up, we do, we do wish the council would reconsider a position on the north, uh, I believe it's six acre, the north of property to a RS nine, rezoning to a seventy-foot lot, uh, requirement, uh, for that area for a cul-de-sac, um, for current zoning, uh, versus current zoning, I believe, right now. It's for townhomes for that piece. That is something we would like to have as consideration. But otherwise, um, obviously, uh, with the four hundred feet to the, uh, to the west of, uh, Fox Valley. And then we've shifted the layouts and discussed that with some of the homeowners on how this would look going forward. And we feel like we have a very good transition, uh, in this piece into our development. So if you have any questions, I'm here to take, uh, any questions you may have at this time.
Okay, let me, let me ask, um, again, then if there's anybody else on the phone that wants to address the council on item six A.
Yes, I would, please.
Okay, please give us your name and your address.
Yes, it's Lance Van Bleet, twenty-one eighty Southeast Creek Hill Way. I currently live in the Fox Valley subdivision here on the far south, uh, southwest corner. I just wanted clarification, that, uh, resolution through the zoning commission last week, caught me a little bit by surprise. I didn't realize they were talking four hundred feet, uh, for, for the RS twelve. So I just want clarification on that. So we are looking at four hundred feet going from the, let's say, the end of my street, which is southeast Creek Hill Way. Four hundred feet to the west is going to be required to be RS twelve lot, is that correct?
Yeah, let's, any other questions, Lance? I want to, I want to get all the, the comments or questions on the, from the, um, public hearing and then we'll ask staff to respond to them. So I want to make sure I get them all. Do you have any others?
I do, I do. Uh, the other point I have, after that four hundred feet, which basically be about four, four and a half lots west of my house, uh, after those, uh, after that four hundred feet, is the developer gonna go right into the RS five lots? Which means, uh, he's going from eighty-foot lots right down to fifty-foot lots all the way to that boulevard that goes north and south? Uh, how exactly is he going to transition those lots from RS twelves, from the four hundred feet, to the RS five, to make it look, um, you know, somewhat compatible throughout the neighborhood? That was another question I had.
All right, any others?
Um, I did also want to, um, uh, I haven't heard back from the city if they have done a traffic study on this project. Again, Creek Hill Way and the other, um, streets within Fox Valley were really not developed to handle a ton of traffic. And we are all a little concerned, uh, since these, this new development will be going to Norwalk schools, that, um, all these RS five lots, which will be a ton of them, will be cutting through our neighborhood and not using that boulevard going north and south over to Veterans. But again, cutting through our neighborhood, getting through to Orilla to head to Norwalk. And we are all very concerned about that as well.
All right. Any others, Lance?
And, uh, that's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on the phone want to address the council on six A?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I would just say real quick, um, I'm getting a text from Renee Johanningmeyer who would like to speak. She's been trying to get in. Renee, is that you?
No, this is Pamela Valentino. Can you hear me?
Do you want to address the council on six A?
I'm sorry, I didn't, not, I don't know about six A. I've been trying to get ahold of you with the three oh four that you guys passed money to Scott Cutler. I just wanted, on record, he told you he had discussed this with the tenant. I am the tenant. I did not know about this at all until about two hours ago when Matt from Valley Junction and Renee from the Home Association told me. Put that on record.
Okay.
Because what Matt, Scott said, that I knew about it? I did not.
Okay. Well, we'll make sure that's in the record, Pamela. I guess between you and Scott, whatever your lease provides is, is what you guys have agreed to do, which is not something we should really get in, but we'll make sure that it's reflected in minutes.
Yes, since he told you I was involved in it, I'm not.
Okay. You bet. All right, so getting back to six A, is there anyone else on the phone that wants to address, uh, the city council on six A?
Yes, this is Shannon Beatty and I'm at forty-five thirty-seven Southeast Fox Valley Court. My home backs up to the north, uh, side of the zoning that, um, the planning and zoning had recommend, recommended the RS twelve. And I just wanted clarification on, um, what I believe is it Lance is on the phone, uh, stated that, or Seth is on the phone, that stated, um, that they were requesting to take a look again at the RS nine. Is that just for the cul-de-sac area or is that for the entire north side of the lot? I just wanted clarification on that.
Seth, can you clarify that for her?
Uh, yeah, so I was referring to the RS nine section, to the north section, to the north of Fox Valley, um, where we've shown, uh, a single cul-de-sac there. Again, the, the challenge that we've seen, uh, in regards to the, um, RS twelve, uh, in eighty-foot minimum lots sizes for that cul-de-sac, um, is the density issue, um, being that, um, it's kind of a, it's not a lot of room. And so again, uh, we've drawn concepts with the RS nine concept and the RS twelve. And again, that's why we asked for consideration of that area. And again, that's why we asked for consideration of that area, uh, to go to RS nine, uh, from its current, uh, use.
Okay, so Seth, I'm not, I'm not sure I got an answer to Shannon's question. She's trying to figure out how much land are you guys asking that goes from RS 12 back to RS nine? She's trying to understand the, how broad your request is.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I understood that. Uh, Brandon Stubbs is our engineer, he's probably on this call as well. So Brandon can speak up, but I do believe that land area is somewhere between five and six acres.
Okay.
And Brandon, if you're on here, can you speak to that?
Yep. Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, and let me ask you before you respond, that from the staff standpoint, is there any way to pull up on the overheads or anything, exactly what we're talking about? I mean, we don't mind looking at Russ, but we'd rather, um, we, we'd rather look at the, the land that we're talking about.
Well, and I was, I was going to say to that, to that end, Mayor, it's, it's kind of difficult. You know, P&amp;Z, you know, really hashed this out and went through it. And, uh, it's hard to look at this on the fly and, you know, do something other than what they recommended, to be honest. So I'd love to see what we're talking about up on the screen.
Yeah, let's do that. Let me, let me make sure we get all the public hearing comments, and then we'll let the staff respond, and then we can decide what's appropriate tonight. So is, I don't know, Lynn, or who's, who's, who's in charge of this, but is there any way to get these, something on the overheads so we can see what we're talking about?
Probably the easiest way would be, um, how we did it last time. Linda would come up, log in on Teams, and if you can pull up the maps through a shared drive and share your screen. That's how Lynn did it with the comp plan presentation last time, so that seemed to work well.
Okay, so while Linda's doing that, I guess Shannon, do you have any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I guess, uh, the reason that I'm requesting more information on that is because you saying the cul-de-sac area, which would be further to, it would be to the west of where my home is located. My home would back up to the eastern side of that north lot that they're proposing. So my question is, are those homes that are going to be on my backside, are those going to be the RS 12, or are they requesting for that entire lot, which was recommended and discussed by the, um, the homeowners? And then was also then approved or requested by the planning and zoning to be RS 12? Is he requesting that whole north lot be RS nine, or just further west over in the cul-de-sac area?
Yeah, so just, yeah, just to clarify that, this is Seth Moulton again. We are, we are requesting, uh, that the whole area go to RS nine. Um, because we, uh, the way the layout works, if you were to do a mixture of 80 footers and then go to 70 footers on the cul-de-sac, um, it is not, um, a very feasible use of that piece of ground. And but again, if the, if the RS nine for that area, um, could be considered and approved, um, we do feel like that would be a great, um, uh, a, a great addition to that area for the, the limited space that it, it provides.
But I believe the discussion that we've had with the, um, the planning and zoning and as far as with the neighborhood was that those were still not quite into blending with the neighborhood going into the RS nine.
Yep, well, we've got, and we've got the report from planning and zoning. So we'll have Linda pull up and show the land that, that, um, is in question. In other words, what the applicant's asking be go back to RS nine versus what planning and zoning said was RS 12. And then we can have that discussion, but it doesn't mean that much to all of us until we can get it up on the, on the screen. So, uh, anything else, Shannon, then I'll see if anybody else wants to speak so we can get the exhibit.
No, thank you kindly.
Okay. Um, anyone else then, uh, on the phone that wants to, uh, address the council on item 6A? Okay. Hearing no one else, we'll...
Oh, sorry. Um, am I muted now?
Yes.
Okay, this is Charlie Crease at 2166 Southeast Fox Valley Drive. I just wanted to echo Lance's concern about the traffic, that's something we've talked about a lot. Um, we have over 50 very concerned families about that in Fox Valley. Um, we already have some traffic going a bit too fast, especially on Fox Valley Drive. Um, with this development tripling or quadrupling the number of cars on that road and Creek Hill Way, um, we're just very, want to stress, um, urgently the need for that traffic study before anything moves forward.
Okay. Thanks, Charlie. Anyone else?
Yes.
Okay, please give us your name and address.
My name is Leslie Whacker. I live at 4588 Southeast Beaver Brook Trail. Uh, my house would be directly to the south of this area to the six acres that they are requesting, uh, or wanting to make RS nine. I would just like to say I would prefer that they stick with their staff recommendation of planning and zoning to keep it at an RS 12, um, lot, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. All right. Anyone else? Okay. Um, now I'll close the public hearing. I guess until we can get this map up here, uh, can someone from the staff address the question about whether a traffic study's been done and how the traffic's been analyzed?
Hello, Brian Hemisath, city engineer. Uh, we have done a traffic study, it was done back in June. Um, it's, this has really been an area that's been planned out for a long time. The changes aren't, uh, very significant to, uh, to the traffic data that's already been analyzed. We don't anticipate any traffic issues. There will be an increase of traffic, obviously, on the roads that everybody is speaking about because there is no development to the west at this time. Um, but it's just typical city, um, uh, expansion, and, uh, it's all planned.
So the roads that exist can accommodate the traffic based on this land use? It's just a matter that it's all vacant now and it's going to, okay?
That's correct.
All right. And was the traffic study, I mean, that was, was that discussed at planning and zoning?
It was.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome.
So I guess all the other questions, um, for staff to help us understand, we need to get, we need to get a map up here that shows the, the property, um, that the applicant's being asked to change to RS nine from the recommended RS 12.
Wrong one.
This is Renee Johanningmeyer at 612 Walnut Street. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I, we were trying to speak, and I'm actually, I have you on conference call. And we're with the Neighborhood Association, and there's several other people here right now, and we've tried to speak. And I know that this has already been voted on, but for some reason, um, I don't, we evidently were in mute. And we're very, very disappointed that it takes, on top of not being able to hear us over the phone, that we have on an agenda something that gives us no information on what we're going to speak about. We just learned this afternoon about the Billy V's restaurant at that building. It sounds like in February, it feels to us like it was intentionally purchased with the, um, with the idea of getting this funding, this, for $824,000 to basically a popular local restaurant that we all love dearly, to tear down the building, take down the restaurant, put in 11 apartments, all funded by taxpayers, to, and, and when, and Billy V's doesn't even know about it today. And you look at an agenda, and we're supposed to, uh, we're supposed to know that this was going to be on the agenda tonight? We were all fiercely, and you're, you're in a room with a lot of people here right now. We're, we're trying to figure out how on earth this just now happened. We're in shock. And voted on and moved forward and, you know, we're, we're just in shock. This was not the original intention for us in, as residents. We were in favor of trying to get more affordable housing in those upper units of those businesses. The idea was not to tear down our buildings and take down our local businesses so that somebody can get all of this funding. We don't even know what to say. And how we're just now finding out about it, and, and that Billy V's doesn't know until just a couple hours ago. If somebody could speak on that, we would appreciate it.
Well, Renee, it sounds like your, your major concern is, is the restaurant, and like I said...
No, no, not at all. It's $824,000 of taxpayers' money, which we understand is TIF money. So somebody wants to spend it no matter what. We get that. But $824,000, this was not the intention of what we were trying to move forward with.
It's not...
And for...
Renee, it's not TIF money. It's, it's money for affordable housing, and it has to be used for affordable housing. And that's what it's being used for. It's not available for anything other than affordable housing. So no other projects in Valley Junction that, that aren't...
So on Fourth Street, it didn't go through. Everyone, I think, is very clear what the public's opinion is. We already don't have parking. So what about all the other business owners? Because we haven't had a chance to even pull together the business owners who are already struggling with parking on Fifth Street. So what are we doing to the other businesses? This isn't relating to one business, this is the entire Fifth Street. Uh, we just, we're trying to, we're trying to understand how all this came about on an agenda that tells us nothing about what the topic was going to be on today, to vote for 400...
And she's gone.
Business, that, basically to tear down one of our local businesses. This is not what, I mean, we don't even know what to say. You've got a room of really upset people here.
So I don't know, Tom, what you want to do to address this, but we voted on it, and it seems like it's come through the process. So I, we need to clear it up for the residents. I'm not sure any council person here, you, are you prepared? Do you want to change your vote? Do you want to pull this thing back and delay it, or what you want to do? I thought we made it very clear that this money has to go for affordable housing, so, um...
And that's fine, but I would also say somebody, if we're not hard to get ahold of, I think everyone there can agree to that. We're easy to get ahold of. Anybody can get ahold of us, and we knew nothing about this. Nobody thought that maybe you might want to mention it, that this was going to come up, that you were going to pass with something that doesn't mention anything on the agenda. I mean, how are we supposed to take care of each other?
I'll see that too, as well.
Would you wait a minute until you're asked to come up here until she finishes? Yeah, that'd be, appreciate that, instead of you speaking halfway on your way up. So Renee, have you, all right, Renee, have you, have you completed your comments?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
And I, but really, parking, I also want that addressed. I mean, these businesses are already struggling, and that didn't even come up. I'm shocked.
Yeah, I think we're try, aren't we trying to, I guess, not, who, um, Lynn, aren't we trying to address the parking issues as, as a part of updating the West Des Moines Comp Plan in the Valley Junction area?
Uh, this is Linda. Um, so we've identified that as an issue, and we're working through evaluation of the area. We don't have any specific recommendations as of yet, but yes, that's on our radar.
Okay.
But no requirements for parking? I mean, we couldn't even get the Phoenix Gym area because we had to get a variance, and we would have had to remove all of our green space for parking. So is there no requirement?
Uh, Renee, this is Linda again. There is, within the, the zoning that this property is, the Valley Junction Historic Business District, there is no requirement for parking.
That's interesting. I guess that's another conversation. Thank you.
Linda, has it always been that way?
Um, ever since I've been with the city, it's been that way.
Okay. All right. Come on up, please.
You know, I guess, I guess I would, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, let's, I want to, I want to finish the old agenda item and then get back to 6A, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that.
Yep.
We didn't get an opportunity to speak, I had no, but we should set up during that process, or I want Mr., other Mr. Cutlers here. Jonas Cutler, uh, 204 Holiday Circle. Um, the fact that there was, it was two different projects, it was, kind of comes to mind here. You know, there's one house, and, you know, and that I live in, it'd be a four-bedroom house, and it costs whatever it costs. Next door is a different address with four-bedroom house, but there's a humongous price difference, and it's, it's just a different building. Right? I think that, um, what Mr. Trevilian here, Councilman Trevilian, was asking for, was it just that we followed the process? Right? When we stopped to follow, when we start, when we follow the, the given process, that's what, that's how things come out fairly. Um, to, to kind of start switching things, you heard the other caller on the phone talk about how it seemed like a backroom deal or a smoke room deal, and that may or may not be the case, but it does the perception that was being, that's being given to by the, by the, by the taxpayers here. As you hear Ms. Renee on the phone, and you heard the, the other gentleman speak to that. So again, I, I mean, it's, maybe it's too late now, I don't know, but we've spent tonight, we have $1.5 million. And it seems like the process into, uh, both of these things just fell short. We had to run through the, the, this IT structure, which may or may not be, you know, necessary. And then we had to run through this, this other $824,000 for a building, you know, without following the process. We have a process, let's just stick to it. I mean, this process seems fair. We have due diligence, we have, you know, oversight. So it's my encouragement that we, that we follow that. I, thank you again, I didn't mean to, to, to fund the council. I, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, albeit untimely.
Okay. Thank you, Jonas. All right. So...
Russ wanted to speak.
Okay, Russ, anything else on 4Q?
Yeah, I, I mean, I was just going to say, you know, we had this at F&amp;A, we brought it through, we had to publish our agenda there. This was on the agenda, it was on the agenda for, for our council meeting tonight. And we had not heard from anybody in regards to this issue until right now, after we already voted on it. So, um, you know, Kevin wanted to go a different, go through a different process. Maybe he's heard from all these people, but he never said anything about it. So maybe he knew that there was an issue, and he never shared it with people. But this is the first that we're hearing of any issue in regards to 4Q and, and this, this building, and this process. I mean, uh, Cutler was, uh, approved on the exact same project, it was just at a different address. The thought to us was, you know what, it's the same project, it's the same 11 affordable housing units. I don't know if there's an issue between the tenant and the owner of the building. I have no idea what's going on there, but none of this has been made aware to the city council to this point, so...
I think we have to assume that Mr. Cutler's going to follow his legal obligations, um, with Billy V's on their lease, which is something we can't get into. And I guess to me, the only way that this becomes a material issue is if there's other affordable housing projects that could compete for this money. And what we're being told by the staff is there aren't any. What we suggested is open up the process again, and if there are competing projects, let's, let's figure out how we can fund them because we've been struggling to try to find affordable housing in Valley Junction. So it seems to me that that, that could answer the question, is it'd be nice if we had more of these projects come forward that we could fund. Um, so it's only in the event there was a competing affordable housing project in Valley Junction that would have scored higher than this. And I thought we had that conversation, but I think, um, we're asking Christine that you reopen up the process to see if there are other projects out there that would have competed for this money. And if they would have had higher scores, then let's figure out how to fund them.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with you on that.
Okay, so I'd like to get back, uh, to, uh, 6A, and it looks like, Ryan, we've got the map up. So I'm not sure, Linda, are you gonna, are you gonna walk through this with us and then try to respond to, um, Leslie, Charlie, Shannon's, and Lance's questions?
Yes.
Okay.
So the map that we have up is basically, the yellow outline is the applicant's request for single-family. When they came in, they asked for RS five zoning for everything in yellow. Um, staff was concerned about the transition between this new area and the existing development. So staff had recommended to the Planning and Zoning Commission that the areas outlined in blue be zoned to an RS 12, which is a transition in lot size between the existing development and the proposed development. The Planning and Zoning Commission, after discussion with residents and the applicant, decided to take staff's recommendation and keep those areas at RS 12 for the rezoning request. Uh, the applicant is wishing to change some or all of that area to RS nine. They can achieve a low narrower lot if they do that. That's not what the P&amp;Z recommended.
So we're really focused just on the area, uh, within the blue outline?
Correct.
Okay. So I know, and maybe I'll ask because it came through Development and Planning Subcommittee. Um, so I know Renee, Matt, if you guys have any other comments on this?
I, I don't have any comments at this point on this item.
Okay. So obviously, the, other than the traffic question, which I think Brian Hemisath responded, um, that the current infrastructure will support these land uses, uh, which were always intended out here to begin with. Uh, I think the residents have raised a concern that they want the blue area to remain RS 12, which is what, uh, Planning and Zoning, uh, recommended to the city council. I think Seth's a kind of a soft answer of, we would prefer RS nine, but it doesn't sound like they're going to say it's going to jeopardize the project. So, um, why don't we get a motion a second on the comp plan, and then I'll see if there's any other questions that the council has before we would vote on the comprehensive plan amendment. before we would vote on the comprehensive plan amendment.
And the comp plan is with the staff-proposed RS12 areas, just to confirm.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any other questions or comments from city council on the comprehensive plan amendment?
So just to confirm what the residents are saying, because if the choice of the blue areas is between a lower RS, like an RS5 or RS9, but the staff is proposing RS12, it sounds like the residents in the area are preferring RS12. And if that is the case, and I think it is, then I'm very supportive of, of going with the staff recommendation on this particular piece.
And, and the planning and zoning recommendation.
As well. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments on the comp plan amendment, all in favor, please say aye. And again, this is, this is with the planning and zoning recommendation.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the comp plan amendment is approved as recommended by planning and zoning. The second item is the ordinance for the first reading.
Move consideration of the ordinance.
Second.
Are there questions or comments on the ordinance? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Ryan?
Five yes. Nearing to amend the official zoning map in the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019. Amending Title IX zoning, Chapter Four zoning districts and maps.
Move approval.
Okay.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? First reading's approved. Item 6B. Yep.
Mayor, just, so in the middle of all that, we, we had 6A, and then we went back to 4Q. And can it, so can I ask a question on, on kind of where we're at here? Because of my understanding under 4Q is there's still, staff is going to move forward with a development agreement relative to that property. All we talked about was the program, the, the due diligence program and the funding there.
The recommendation, that, the recommendation will be incorporated in the development agreement, but the development agreement is still subject to negotiation and approval.
So the actual project itself, that, that is the subject matter that I'm, that I'm hearing from Renee, Johanning Meyer, from Jonas and others, the merits of the project, not the merits of the award of the, of the, the program, the due diligence committee, the merits of the project itself have not come before the council. Right. And if there are concerns about the merits of the, the project itself, what the building will ultimately result in, not how the money is shifted, but how the project runs, that's at the point in time where we could also weigh in and express whatever concern or protections we would need.
And if that got voted down, then the money would go back into the pool.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the clarification, because it was my understanding, this isn't over. This is still coming back to the council.
It's a recommendation subject to the actual project getting approved and the development agreement getting approved.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I, I was trying to say that earlier. I, I used the official term, the whole shebang. This is not it. Because there's, there's much to do, and the council will have opportunities to vote in that way.
Vote was to award the incentive, though, right?
Yeah, just, but that's just.
For a project, and now, now the staff can draft the development agreement, and now the applicant can come forward with the project.
We're essentially saying we'd like to see 11 units of affordable housing within this district, because we have the funds that have to be spent on that. Now, does the project, does the project move forward? I don't know. We have a development agreement that hasn't yet been presented to us.
Yeah.
So, all right, anyway, that was, thank you for clarifying.
All right, item 6B, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Trailside Apartments, 485 South 19th Street. Amend the comprehensive plan land use map to designate medium-density residential and rezoning to residential medium-density initiated by Annoim Housing. Ryan, would you please read the date that notice was published?
July 17th and July 22nd, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
The Planning and Zoning Commission, by a vote of five yes, with two absent, adopt a resolution recommending approval of the comp plan amendment and rezoning request. There was also a number of correspondences received that were included with the council communication. And then since Friday, there's been additional correspondences, as well as a petition received that are on the dais this evening.
Okay, so that, the, this, the additional item that we received tonight was a petition, correct?
I believe there was a petition.
Not a planning and zoning? Was this at planning and zoning, or is this new?
No, that was presented today.
Okay, so planning and zoning didn't have this? Okay. All right, so now, yeah, it's this. So I guess we're, it's time for the public hearing. And I'll ask first for anyone that's physically in the chambers, if they want to address the council on item 6B. I guess one admonishment that, really, the question for the council tonight is, is should this property be multifamily? We can't get into the physical attributes that may or may not rent these. They have protections under state and federal laws, so we're not interested in talking about the conditions of people that may rent these apartments, because it's not appropriate, nor is it even legal for us to have that conversation. So I know some of the comments and the petitions are drawing conclusions based on the conditions of the people that may rent these, but that's not appropriate for us to consider. To me, that's, would be extremely discriminatory. So the real question for the elected officials is, should this be multifamily property?
They're included in the back.
The what?
The reviews in the back.
Okay, so with, with that, we'll have, we'll open up the public hearing for the people in the council chambers. And then when we've completed that, I'll ask if there's anyone on the phone that wants to, to address the council on 6B as well. So, okay, please share your name and address.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Council, Russ Fraser, Annoim Housing, 1535 Linden Street in Des Moines. Here representing Annoim on behalf of the project. I also have colleagues on the phone that are part of our team, as well as our civil engineer and architect. Should we get into some technical questions? And perhaps, I don't know, the, the P and Z notes are, are back available via Zoom or not. But if, if something comes up, we'll do our best to answer that.
Yeah, and Russ, I want to make sure and clear this with staff before we get started. The council is simply being asked to, to, to consider the zoning request. Whatever project may come through is still going to be subject to a public hearing and comments on the actual project itself. Tonight, what we're trying to decide is, is multifamily use for this land appropriate? So I want everyone to understand that the actual project that would come forward is still going to be subject to a public hearing. So with that, please go ahead.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. And just, yeah, why, I really did want to reiterate that point and be here effectively to, to speak to whatever comments that may come up from your questions, as well as just to speak to the fact that, you know, as we're digging into this project and looking at the opportunity, we really took into strong consideration and used your housing assessment from 2018 as a roadmap for this project. And I think it's one that I think would be very beneficial to the area. It really creates and checks a lot of the boxes as far as that needs assessment goes, as far as all of your, your housing challenges, your recommendations, as well as your areas you're targeting. And so we're very enthused about the project. I'll step back unless the council has any specific questions about now, at this time. I'll stay close if you wish to recall me for any, any, any additional clarification.
Thanks, Russ. What I'd like to do is make sure we close the public hearing, then we'll see if there's any questions for anybody that presented. But since Russ is a proponent of it, let me ask if there are any other proponents that want to speak, and then I'll ask for opponents. So are there any other proponents, either in the council chambers or on the phone, that wants to speak as to item 6B? Okay. Now, opponents, are, is there anyone in, physically present in the council chambers that would like to speak against the project? And then once, I'll let everyone on the phone know when we're done with the comments from here, and then I'll open them back up to the phone. Okay?
Hi, I'm Lori Avern, 2235 Grand Avenue, West Des Moines. I am one of 56 people that signed the petition against this housing project. And I have lived in the same residence for 22 years, so I'm well aware that the campground has been trying to sell this property for many, many years, and has had great difficulty in doing so. And there are many of us that are not happy with this whole situation if this should go in. We will, I will no longer be using the bike trail due to safety reasons. I will no longer feel safe in my home. And I will move if this goes in. And I know there's several others that feel the same way. It will affect our property values. I even have had somebody mention that has some children, that the, this would be in the Jordan Creek School District, and they said it is now full. What are we going to do with children? Are we going to bus them somewhere else that live there? What will we do with them? But it's a family-oriented area that we've lived in, and I'd like to see that stay that way. But again, there are so many of us that are not happy that this goes in. Thank you.
All right, anyone else in the council chambers opposed to item, the rezoning of item 6B? Seeing no one else in the chambers, are there anyone, are there anyone on the phone that would like to address the council in opposition of item 6B, the rezoning? Okay, hearing no one else, I'll declare the public hearing closed. And then the first item is just the, there's the comp plan amendment, which, which would change the property to multifamily. And I see that this came through Development and Planning Subcommittee. So I don't know, Matt or Renee, if you have any other additional comments?
I don't, I don't think we had anything additional that came before our subcommittee. No.
Is it, is it changing it from multi, multifamily residential to medium-density residential? It looked to me like we were going from high, high density to medium density, right? So we're going down in density?
Russ, this is Linda. The majority of the parcel was zoned open space. There are two single-family lots. One of them is being incorporated, and that area is single-family. It's going to medium density. So overall, the density is being increased from what is existing.
How much, Linda?
Here, it is going from, again, the majority of it is open space.
But what's the comp plan?
Comp plan is open space with a small part of it being medium-density. And so the proposal is to take the entire parcel to medium-density. So that's what the comp plan is. And then the zoning is currently open space for the majority of the area with residential single-family for the two single-family lots. The south single-family lot is staying as single-family. The north single-family lot is changing to medium-density, the same as the rest of the parcel. It does provide a transition between the existing open space to the south and the high-density to the north and to the east.
Yeah, so Linda, just so everybody knows that's listening on, online, this is already bordered to the north by apartments at high-density, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just curious, I guess, too, while you get this map up. I know there's already a house there on that residential single-family, but why is that going to stay? And then you got multifamily all around it. Just what was the developer's reason?
I did not talk to the developer about why he didn't approach this other single-family home. I did talk to that owner. He was not happy with the change in zoning, but he didn't indicate any reason why he would want to move.
Okay, so they're not, they don't, they're not buying this land?
They are not purchasing that south lot.
Okay. I thought they were purchasing all of it, so, okay.
So here's, here's what bothers me on this, is that, you know, this is a, a pretty sensitive area of the city. And we've had developers come through before and propose to do something on here. And, I mean, just even recently, we had somebody come through and propose like a mixture of single-family, medium-density, high, high-density. And as a councilman, I'm sitting here looking at this going, you know, what, what do we want this land to be when it grows up? I just, I'm not sure what the appropriate mix of densities are in this area. But as the mayor said, you know, I, I think we need to come up with what makes sense first in that regard. If, if this proposal, we can't determine what specific housing project goes there. It's just looking at how we think the land needs to be zoned for this area, or how it needs to appear on the comp plan. So now we have a proposal in front of us tonight to change this to medium-density residential. Does that make sense for the council, for this piece to be medium-density residential? Because if we say, no, it doesn't, tonight, and we vote this down, and then we have another project that comes forward that asks to do the same thing, well, whether it is or not, that could be seen as discriminatory. And we know that it, it wouldn't be. We're just trying to make the right decision on what this land needs to be zoned, but it won't matter at that point. So, I don't know. I, I struggle with this piece and what makes sense. That being said, I'm not sure, over there on 19th Street, and as Kevin pointed out, I mean, we've got up to the north, high-density residential. We got apartments. I guess in this area, I see that it's, it's going to be, single-family is not a very likely scenario for this, even though there is the one parcel. So what else could it be if it's not medium-density residential? I think, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Usually, we look at, at, you know, from one, one zoning to the next, to the next, and then down to single-family. So this is the next one down is high-density to medium-density.
And I think historically, Russ, because I've had a, a number of developers talk to me about this parcel, you can't afford to buy it and build single-family based on what the owner paid for it. So no single-family developer can buy this land and, and make any money. The, a number of them have come through with high-density, and nobody wants high, at least the neighbors don't want high-density. So the only other alternative is medium.
Right.
Otherwise, it's going to stay open property forever, which some people may like, but that's just not realistic.
But how far over the medium-density does it, I mean, does it almost encompass this entire piece then? I mean, is it possible to have single-family residential closer to Grand Avenue?
That's all the creek. So that won't develop.
Yeah, there's, there's a creek. The city, I think, just took over responsibility for the cemetery that's there. You've got, as, as Kevin pointed out, multifamily on a couple sides of this.
Yeah.
So, you know, to me, this is the lowest density that you're going to get someone that can say, anybody can make it work.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
Other than a handful of houses on South 19th Street, it's all apartments or townhouses or something to that effect.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, I, I think medium-density may make sense over here. I just, I just wonder, as you get further towards Grand Avenue, if some kind of transition down to single-family makes sense over there. I mean, 19th is, is almost, with the exception of the apartments, it's almost kind of industrial. But I, I guess in my mind, I'm just trying to figure out what makes sense as far as the zoning and, and the, you know, comp plan. And, and maybe this does make sense. I'm just trying to work through it in my mind.
This is, this is an older part of West Des Moines, and, Mr. Mayor, you're speaking to the history a little bit. And it's, I, I'm, I'm really, really wondering why someone hasn't done something. Is it just only because people are so curious about high-density? That's the only thing they've proposed? This is a very, very notable area of land in an older part of the city, and yet it's been open space for, of, of, forever.
I mean, it was used as a campground.
Yes. Yeah.
That was the original use.
From the Nazarene Church.
Yeah, and then Walnut Creek purchased it. And there was talk about using one of the buildings for a school gymnasium at one point. But in talking with the development community that's looked at this piece, they just say the cost of, of the property and the development, you can't make single-family work. And the neighbors didn't want any more apartments. So if, if this is going to develop, and again, my, I think, reading most of the comments, I think the concern by the residents isn't the density. It's who may or may not occupy these, which we can't get into.
And that, that really, too, is, as I listen to all the dialogue, is that, you know, going to medium-density, is this the concern of the neighbors? Or is it the potential developer or the potential owner of this development area? So I've studied this as well. It is very difficult to put single-family in this. Medium-density is certainly an option over high-density, because I know high-density is not something that someone wants. So it really becomes an issue of what's the greater good in terms of an opportunity to develop this space? to develop this space when it has really limited options associated with it? And, again, as the mayor said, it's very difficult to get into, "We don't want Anawam, but we might want this." We don't want Anawam because of that. It becomes a really, really, really difficult spot to be in when we are associating certain things with...
Well, I think it's fair to say, if you look at the petition, they're not concerned about the zoning, the density. They specifically underline, "Animal housing provides housing for individuals who, quote, 'live with a mental illness, substance abuse disorder, physical disabilities diagnosis, or HIV/AIDS, or fleeing domestic violence.'" That's their concern, which is not something we can take into consideration. All we can do is decide what the land use, the density should be, regardless of who may rent the, buy them or rent them.
Yes.
When I speak, the question on this, Elise Johnson, 2265 Grand Avenue, number five. What is the difference between medium-density and high-density?
Number of dwelling units, correct, Linda?
Number of what?
Dwelling units, number of residents that could be there.
Okay. And currently, it is zoned?
It's open space right now, which means it's basically a field. Could be anything. So we're changing, being asked to change it to residential, medium-density.
But the number of units on medium-density is less than the apartments that are around it.
Yep.
There's gonna be fewer people living here than could live in the apartments surrounding it.
Okay. Thank you.
Linda, is there a number attached to the medium-density at all? I don't see it anywhere, but sometimes it's medium-density X, medium-density Y, or is this just straight up?
Yes. This is, the request is to zone to residential, medium-density 12, which is 12 units per acre. That's the highest you can go in medium-density.
There it is, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess, as I said here, I just struggle to figure out, if it's not gonna be medium-density, what is it gonna be?
It's not gonna be single-family.
It's not gonna be single-family. It could be commercial, maybe, but that's not a real good spot for a commercial lot. It could be industrial.
Not good.
Hang on, Russ, you know, we got another resident. Can you show your name?
My name's Andrea Leach. I live at 2235 Grand. And, so how many acres are you talking about, so that you're talking 12 units of medium-density?
So Linda, do you have the total number of acres?
Yes. The total footprint, which did not include the south lot, is 6.3 acres.
6.3 times 12. So roughly 72 units on that property.
That's a lot of, that's a lot for that area.
Less than apartments.
It's a lot less than apartments.
Less than the apartments to the north. Linda, what's the number on high-density for dwellings?
High-density, you can go up to 18 units per acre.
And is that one just to the north, the high-density? Is that 18, or is that 15?
I would have to research that. I don't have a number on that, but I would assume it's closer to the 18, just looking at the footprint.
Okay. Well, and to me, there's geographic physical separation, when you look at the creek that's there, the topography change, the cemetery that's there, you've got the Jordan House, they just bought three acres of it. So, other than Grand Avenue, this is, you know, it's got some topography and physical separation.
Right.
Is there any way that we could do single-family towards Grand Avenue, instead of have the whole thing be medium-density residential?
Russ, towards Grand, you're getting into the creek and the trail that's through there, so that's not buildable.
Well, I see, I mean, but we could stop short. I mean, I'm just wondering if we need to make this entire piece medium-density residential?
Okay.
Why does the whole piece have to be that? Why can't we have some of it be single-family?
But Russ, I don't think the objection isn't the density.
I know, but I'm trying to figure out what makes sense for this area. That's what matters to me the most, is what makes the most sense here. Because I hear what you're saying, and I agree, we need to have a development here that makes sense. Something's going here, what does it need to be? And I agree that medium-density probably makes sense when it comes to, you know, right along 19th Street. I could even see high-density, because like Kevin said, to the north, that is what it is. But I'm just wondering if this entire developable parcel needs to be orange, medium-density, or is it possible to have it, as we get a little bit out towards Grand Avenue, could it be single-family residential? That's what I'm wondering.
It doesn't look like the single-family is conducive to that.
Mr. Frazier is at the podium. Russ, can you address how much is developable?
That's exactly what I was gonna try to do, because of the 12 acres roughly we're talking about here, and you can actually see a slight discoloration there on that yellow portion of the map. That's really representing the water. So in addition to creeping towards the creek, creek creeps towards the parcel. So it does cut into really the developable space. And so, well, I understand when Mr. Trimble's suggesting, you know, potentially go single-family to the west, you're getting underwater there at that point, and that really wouldn't be viable to really, I mean, you're talking about a lot of dirt to come in and bring, you know. So that's what really has ultimately made this parcel for years very challenging from a development perspective, just because of that. So, and by keeping it the medium-density side of it, for us, it's more of a long-term view, because it's, you know, it's never gonna need, we would never need high-density, because you really couldn't, you know, you'd have to go vertical to the point that you'd be exceeding your zoning requirements at that point, anyway. So, even beyond high-density.
And we'll see the site plan, when ultimately something comes forward, we'll see the site plan that will show what physically can be developed on this site, anyway, because based on the other issues it has.
So, there's 6.3 develop, oh, 6.3 acres on this parcel. Out of that 6.3, what's developable?
Well, there's about, probably about four and a half to five.
So the entire orange area that we see right here, that is 6.3 acres, but then when you take out the creek, you take out the sidewalk, you take out the trail, then it becomes down to four.
Correct.
And if it's RS 12, that's 48 units, potentially, something like that?
Little, give or take, but, yeah, we're focusing on, you know, just really, at this point, you know, if we were to, the site plan coming forward to you would be a 36-inch building, so, senior, by the way.
It's senior.
Senior housing?
Yes.
So, Russ, let me ask you, then, I mean, where it says on the map on the right, where it says RM, basically to the left of the R, it looks like there's kind of a shadowed area right there. Is that all just gonna be open land?
Much of it will be, yes.
That's what you're saying, it's kind of the floodway, Russ.
Yep, yep, okay.
And it works its way around to Grand, Russ.
Okay.
We'll have to bring in a little Phil, yes, but, I mean, certainly not to the point, and so, and I do, so, I'll step back to the questions, but then, I, so.
Thank you.
I have one more question.
So, need your name again, please.
My name's Andrea Leach. You said you were looking at senior housing? Okay. Just, I just wanted, I was just curious what we're looking at. Okay, thank you.
All right, someone wanna make a motion on the comp plan amendment? We'll get a second, then we'll find, we'll get final comments or questions.
Move approval.
For a second?
Second.
Final questions or comments on the comprehensive plan land use change? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The comp plan amendment is approved. The second item is the first reading of the ordinance.
Move consideration of the first reading.
Second. Questions or comments on the ordinance? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? First ordinance is passed.
I think that was the consideration.
Oh, sorry.
Five yes, ordinance amending the official zoning map in the city code, the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, amending Title IX zoning, Chapter IV zoning districts and map.
Move approval of the first reading. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any abstentions? Okay, first reading's approved. Item 6C, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Amendment Number Two to the Midtown Urban Renewal Area initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 24th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now it's time for anyone in the audience would like to address the City Council on Item 6C. So first, I'll ask if there's anybody physically in the council chambers that would like to address a council on 6C. Did you want it?
Yeah, I'd like to address that.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Julia Offenbach. I'm fairly new resident of West Des Moines about three years ago, 4470 Westwood Drive. I've been in this country for almost 30 years, and I am speaking up today because I am hoping I'm still in the United States. Because the last hour and a half make me feel like I'm back in Russia. You guys approved a $600,000 Band-Aid for an IT.
Julia, we're on item 6C.
I'm sorry, I don't speak very often. I've never spoken to you guys before, but I feel like I need to speak my mind. You have not pressed the IT director to do any kind of due diligence. If it was that important and that urgent, why was due diligence not done? What's more important is why were you not holding him accountable? This is my money, too. I work very hard for my money. I am a single mother, and I'm a business owner, and I pay my taxes on a regular basis. You spent $600,000 on a Band-Aid. Shame on you. Shame on you. My background is computer science, I have computer engineering degree, and now I'm a lawyer. What I witnessed today is disgusting. The whole debacle with affordable housing, with all due respect, Mr. McKinney, just because we have more steps, doesn't mean that the first step should have been skipped. Mr. Trevilian was absolutely right. This is the developer who spent two years not able to produce the result, and you just took the money and handed it to him without following the process. Why? How dare you? This is our community. How can you do that?
I'm gonna ask you to wrap up your comments, because we're beyond that. I'm not gonna reopen the...
I wanna know, the 6B discussion that you just guys had, do you even care about property owners? You had 56, I remember hearing, property owners signing a petition against this, and you just completely ignored them? Why do we pay our taxes? Shame on you. In almost 30 years, I have never been disappointed that I live in this country the way that you disappointed me today. I feel like I am back in Russia. There is that wall of politicians who don't listen to their constituents, and that's what I witnessed today. Shame on you, every single one of you. Thank you.
So is there anyone, is there anyone on the phone that wants to address the City Council on Item 6C? Okay, here are no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is a resolution to approve the urban renewal plan amendment. Came through Finance and Administration, and it indicates there's no outstanding issues.
Move approval of the resolution. Second.
All right, questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the urban renewal plan is amended. Item 6D, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the agreement for private development initiated by Four Over Five LLC and Melee LLC. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 29th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, is there anyone, it looks like alls we have is staff. So is there anyone on the phone that wants to address the City Council on Item 6D? Okay, here are no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is a resolution to approve the agreement. This also came through Finance and Administration Subcommittee, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval. Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the agreement is approved. Item 6E, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider agreement for private development initiated by Brooks Holding LLC and Capital Financial Partners, Inc. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 29th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, is there anyone on the phone that would like to address the City Council on Item 6E? All right, here are no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, this is a resolution to approve the agreement, came through Finance and Administration Subcommittee, and there are no issues.
Move approval. Second.
Questions or comments on the agreement? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the agreement's approved. Item 6F, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider conveyance of property to West Lakes Properties, L.C., portion of former southeast Moffett Lake Road right-of-way initiated by the City of West Des Moines. This was continued from the July 20th council agenda. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 15th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, is there anyone on the phone that would like to address the City Council on Item 6F? Okay, here are no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is a resolution to approve the conveyance of property, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second. Questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that item is approved. Item 6G, the council's being asked to continue this to the August 17th, 2020 city council agenda.
Ask to continue?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay, that item's continued. Item 6H, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider vacation of a portion of Linwell Place right-of-way initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 29th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now be the time for anyone on the phone that would like to address the City Council on Item 6H. Okay, here are no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have to take these items separately, so the first item is the ordinance for the first reading.
Move consideration of the first reading.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Ryan?
Five yes, an ordinance vacating a portion of Linwell Place right-of-way.
Move approval of the first reading.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the first reading's approved. Item Two is a resolution to approve the conveyance of the property.
Move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Questions or comments?
So, question, are we selling this to them or giving it to them? Anybody?
We've been negotiating down there for quite a while, and after the Manobombs first came in, they were kinda committed to doing things, and kinda ran out of assets, if you will. And so we negotiated, your short answer is we're selling this to them. It's not at the fair market value price, but we are selling a lot to them at $3 a square foot. So, it's a part and parcel to their development down there, and they're adjacent property owners, so it is a benefit to them.
So this is excess city-owned property, so there's nothing we can really do with it?
No, that's correct, sir.
Okay, so how'd you end up on the price that you ended up?
Just through negotiations. We, Richard Hurd also bought a piece down there. I think we charged him $4.25 a square foot, I can't remember the exact amount. So this is not extremely less than, you know, what the fair market value was for Mr. Hurd, but it does assist them with the development. It brings together the parcels, and so they can use it, and so that's how we reached that agreement.
So they're gonna put an access out onto Linwell, out there by Prospect, is that correct?
They've got the opportunity to do that. They kinda decided against it, but now I think they might be reconsidering that, but that would be...
This is less than one-tenth of an acre.
Yeah, it's just, it's a...
You can't do hardly anything with it.
It's a small lot.
Three bucks sounds like a good price to me for less than one-tenth of one acre.
And we bought it for the Storm Sewer Project, and so it was excess property in that sense. It was just a vacant lot. It was just a vacant lot that was down there for quite a while. So it's kind of, as I said, it's kind of a part of a bigger negotiated deal that we've been working on for quite a while.
What did we buy it for?
Well, the Linwell Place Right Away, that would be the, if I'm remembering this correctly, because I used to live right west of there, that would be the road that never went through. So that was not part of the purchase for that Outfall project. That, the city already owned that forever.
There's three pieces down there that we're selling. There's Linwell Lot One, there's a Linwell, a little piece that we're speaking about here. I guess maybe I confused those two. And then we're also selling them a portion of the Grand Avenue, off of Grand Avenue that sits, our Storm Sewer sits on that easement, so we've reserved an easement for that. They're going to share that with Hy-Vee Fast and Fresh, so they have an access that'll be appropriate distance back from Grand and First. And so, so we've had three different prices on those. One was $3 a square foot. There's, I think this was actually, I must, I'll have to correct myself, I think this was a dollar a square foot, because it is small and it was right away.
So this is the street right away that we vacated?
Okay.
Okay. All in favor of the conveyance of property, please say aye.
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 Any abstentions? Okay, that item is approved. Six I, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the sale and conveyance of property interest in ingress egress access easements to First Street Limited Partnership, part of Lot E, Linwell Lot One, Linwell part of lots two and three, Linwell Platte Two initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 29th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, is there anyone on the phone that would like to address the city council on item six I? All right, here and no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is a resolution to approve the conveyance of property interest in ingress egress easement and approval of reservation of permanent public utility easements, and it indicates that there's no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that item is approved. Six J, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the South Area Trunk Sewer Western Extension initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 24th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, is there anyone on the phone that would like to address the city council on item six J? All right, here and no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is a resolution to approve the acquisition of agricultural property if needed.
Move approval.
Second. Questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? If that item passes. Six K, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider fiber conduit interconnect teal route initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 24th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, is there anyone on the phone that would like to address the city council on item six K? All right, here and no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together, and this came through the Public Services Council Subcommittee as well.
Move approval.
Second. Questions or comments?
I do have a question, Mayor. As we look at this fiber conduit stuff, and I know obviously conduit was a big issue for us a couple weeks ago, when the grounds open, are we able to kind of put in some of the conduit, kind of the dig once theory? As this, you know, large area where conduit's going in, is there an opportunity to maybe dig once?
Sharing our trenches, Brian.
Brian, I'm a city engineer. Yeah, I can address that. Essentially, everything we're doing with the Open Access Conduit Network for, what we're partnering with for Google Fiber, we're trying, we are doing that. We're, we're doing, trying to do as much as we can dig once. And also with these projects with Microsoft, anywhere where we don't have some kind of conduit in the area, we're trying to pull something that either the city can use, other utilities can use, so we're not out there digging multiple times with flags all through the right of way. So, yes.
Fantastic, thank you.
You got it.
Okay, all in favor of six K, one, two, and three, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that item is approved. Item six L, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Sugar Creek Greenway Trail Phase One initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 24th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, is there anyone on the phone that would like to address the city council on item six L? Okay, here and no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, we have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together.
Move approval. Second.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, actually, I did have a quick question on this. I know there was a lot of concern about the bank stabilization. I know there were residents who were concerned who live on, in the King's, King's Landing area. And I was wondering, I just wanted to confirm with the, I don't know, could be Sally, could be Brian, that the residents who are on the west side of this are, are going to be good to go when it comes to some trees that we said would be there. And in regards to, yeah, I guess that's, that's probably it, because I know the Sugar Creek Greenway was meant to have some trees to kind of replace those that were removed during the bank stabilization program.
Brian, I'm a city engineer. From my understanding, Dave Sadler, Jason Schlippern went out and visited with all the residents out there about this very thing. And part of the, of the discussion was replacement of trees. I don't know the exact number. I don't know any of the specifics, but I know that there was some trees that are going to be installed out there. I don't know if Sally has any more specifics on that or not. I don't, no, Sally does not.
I just wanted to confirm that there were discussions that were happening between the residents and.
Okay.
And it sounds like Mr. Sadler was out there doing exactly that, so that sounds great.
Yep.
Thank you so much, Brian.
Yep.
All right, all in favor of six L, one, two, and three, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? That item's approved. Item six M, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Raccoon River Park exterior lighting improvements initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 24th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, is there anyone on the phone that would like to address the city council on, on item six M?
So, I'm sorry.
Okay, here and no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. I want to get a motion in a second, and then Renee, if you've got a question.
I'll make a motion.
For a second.
All right, Renee?
Oh, I'm just saying, you know, of the, and I'm supportive, supportive of this, but, you know, when you look at cost, and we've been talking about cost of a lot of things, IT, lighting, this is a, you know, $500,000 project for lighting. And, you know, again, as the lady stated, that, and left, things cost. And, you know, you have to decide on what you need and whatnot. We definitely need the right lighting in that area for people to be safe and whatnot. So, again, I just wanted to comment on my thoughts in terms of, you know, this is what we're paying for lighting, and we had the other IT issue here. Things cost, and you hope that you're getting the best value for what you're doing, so. But I'm supportive of the lighting.
Well, and the other thing we're doing with these lighting projects is being a lot more environmentally sensitive and.
Yeah.
And, and stuff with the lights that we are switching to. So I know we've made a lot of investments in the area to try to upgrade.
LED.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of six M, one, two, and three, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that item is approved. Item seven, new business. Seven A, Salmon's Financial Group, 8,300 Mills Civic Parkway combined property into one lot for commercial development, Midland National Life Insurance Company. It's a resolution to approve and release the final plat, and there's no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second. Questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That item is approved. Seven B, Spring Crest Town Homes, southwest corner of Westtown Parkway and Sedonia Drive, subdivide property into 48 footprint lots and one outlawed for the construction of townhomes. Spring Crest Town Homes, WDM, LLC. This is a resolution to approve the preliminary plat and the site plans. The staff, I think his, let me see, we had a couple, said there's no outstanding issues, but there's two conditions on page two of the communication. One building permit for one five-plex building will be allowed until the associated final plat is recorded with the county, and that the revised color renderings of the four-plex building be submitted to staff prior to recording the final plat. So those are the two additional conditions that are being, council's being asked to impose on the approval of the, of the preliminary plat and site plan.
Move approval with those two conditions.
Second. Questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Those items are approved. Seven C, Microsoft Osmium, 5855 Southwest Carey Street. Approval to allow five additional temporary tents. Turner Construction Company and Tri-City Electric Company. Resolution to approve the major modification, and there's no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second. Questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That item's approved. Seven D, issuance of $13,805,000 of general obligation refunding capital loan notes, Series 2020A. City initiated. We have item one, a motion to receive and file the report of bids. Item two, a resolution to authorize and approve the loan agreement, providing for the sale and issuance of bonds and providing for the levy of taxes to be paid on said bonds. And three, a resolution authorizing redemption of outstanding general obligation bonds, Series 2012D. And I know we had some bids today, and I know, Tim, there's going to be some comments made. Someone from PFM, are you going to start?
Well, yeah, Tim Stiles, Finance Director. I was just going to introduce Suzanne Gerlock, who's speaking on the teams. She's our representative from PFM. Wanted to just introduce her to the new council members who may not have had a chance to, to work with her before, but she's represented the city for several years for, with bond, related to bond issuances and other financial matters. I'll let Suzanne speak about today's sale. I figured maybe you guys were due to have some, some good news coming your way at this meeting, so I'll let Suzanne speak.
Hi, Suzanne.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Good evening.
Excellent. So I am extremely excited to present the council the bids we received today. This is a new personal low record for interest rates today, so I'm pretty excited. The first series, the 2020A, that is the annual CIP issuance that the city does to pay for capital improvement projects for the next fiscal year. And included in this A series is also the current refunding of the 2012D bonds. Refunding means we're paying off old bonds and issuing new bonds to replace them at a lower interest rate for debt service savings. And the 2012D bonds, the savings that we're showing today go right to the debt service levy for the city. So that's always exciting. We're reducing taxes. So for the 2020A bonds, first and foremost, Moody's did, Moody's Investor Service did affirm the city's AAA rating. That is the highest rating that is available. The City of West Des Moines is rated AAA by both Moody's and Standard and Poor's, but every other year we go back and forth. We don't pay for two rating fees. We don't think that the, the city gets its money worth and the pricing benefits, so we alternate. And 2020 is the year to get the Moody's rating. So that's, congratulations for that affirmation. And today we received 10 bids from over 37 different firms for the A series. The TIC, which is the true interest cost. True interest cost is sort of the aggregated APR, if you will. True interest costs ranging from 0.246% to 0.343%. And that's not a typo, that is 0.24%. Yeah, $13 million at 0.24%. The winning bid came from JP Morgan, with the second place bid coming from Bank of New York Mellon at just 3/10,000 of a basis, basis point higher, meaning 0.003% higher. So tremendous turnout. Our goal with the competitive sale is to get at least three bids. We received 10 on the A series today, and I'm just thrilled. The refunding savings for the 2012D bonds, our goal is 3% savings with the current refunding, and today we received 8.56% savings. So that is $311,622 that comes out of the tax levy in the future. And a fun fact, over the last decade, we update, we keep a track of how many refundings we've done over the years. Over the last 10 years, the City of West Des Moines has saved $10.9 million on refundings. So any chance we get to take advantage of these low interest rate environments, we're absolutely reviewing all of the current debt outstanding to see if there's more savings opportunities. Can't go more than 90 days before the call date, so that's kind of what's stopping us from going whole hog with some other refunding opportunities at this point. So pricing, the City of West Des Moines sort of set the market today. You priced only four basis points over the AAA index today, so that's tremendous. Any questions on the A? And I'll go ahead and cover all three different series as we go through. If anybody has any questions, first, if there's anything I just talked about for the new council members, please feel free to ask any questions at this point before I go on to the B series.
Almost free money.
Yeah.
It's as close to free money as I've ever seen in my career.
Good. Well, we want to be the number one on your, on your chart.
Absolutely.
For your record.
Yeah, I, I think Tim thought it was a typo when I, when I said the 0.024.
Mask on, and I can still see his smile. That's how big it is.
That's pretty exciting. And so if there, I didn't see any other questions, so I'll move on to the 2020B. This is $5.1 million. These are geo urban renewal bonds, and this is to fund the 88th and Mills Street project to kind of finish that project out. These bonds also have the city's AAA rating. These were, the, the, the A series, I forgot to mention, that's, we shortened the term this year to tip, to five years. These bonds, the B series are mature over 12 years because these are paid for by TIPS, so we need more time to gather the tip increment to repay the bonds. So these bonds mature over 12 years. We received seven bids from 34 firms, so a few less bidders, but not very many. And in this case, the TIC ranges from 0.85% to 1.07%. So a little bit wider range, but this is a longer term bond. The longer out the term of the bonds, the higher the interest rates go. Municipal bonds are priced over a yield curve, and so year one has a lower interest rate, year two has a higher interest rate, generally speaking, and, and it goes up throughout the term of the bonds. For the B series, the winning bid came from Robert W. Baird at 0.8594%, so we are under 1%. With the, the second place bid, I call it the cover bid, at just four basis points over, from, again, Bank of New York Mellon, they came in second twice today. And these bonds priced 13 basis over AAA index because they go out a little bit longer over the yield curve.
Wow, so that's less than 1% interest for 12 years.
Yes.
That's, that's unbelievable.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, and lastly, we have the, the C series. More, more good news coming. Lastly, we have the C series.
More stuff for you to sell.
Yeah.
By Mortgage Servicer. You can, that'd be great if you could chat with them.
Yeah, anybody who hasn't refinanced their mortgages, go talk to your lenders. Yeah, the, the third and final series today that we went to market with was 13.56 million, and this is, these were taxable bonds, because these are the ones establishing the conduit network. And so these had to be taxable, still under 2% for taxable bonds, and these went the full 20-year term. And so we received 10 bids from 29 different firms, so a lot of interest today. The true interest cost ranges from 1.68 to 1, to 1.97. So all of the bids received on 20-year taxable bonds were under 2%. Historically, 2% would have been a really great rate for the 12-year bonds, but today we're bringing you taxable bonds for that rate. The winner today for the C series is Raymond James at the 1.68% with the second place bidder just two basis points behind. And actually, for the taxable bonds, pricing still only 58 basis points over MMD. There are some issuers that have a single A credit rating that are going to price 58 basis points over MMD for their geo bonds. So this was tremendous pricing today.
Great. Excellent.
So remind, remind us, Tim, the budget.
So remind us, Tim, the budget that we have for the conduit network? What was the budget on these 13 and 1/2 million bucks? I mean, I think if I remember right, we thought it was going to be like 2.7%?
Yeah, the estimate we were using when we did the cash flow analysis was 2.77. You're correct, Mayor.
Wow.
Yeah, so this is over a percent under that, which is, which is good news. Obviously, we have two more serieses, 21 and 22 to issue, but this starts us out ahead, for sure.
Good.
Good.
Good, that makes Brian feel better on contingency.
Fantastic.
Okay, questions for Suzanne?
Yeah, Suzanne, Greg Godson, I'm new, I'm new to this. Let me ask you, just if we were a city with a worse, if Moody's did not like us as much and we had a lower credit rating, just so, just so I kind of know, what is the typical rate that we might get if we were much less in the rating, just out of curiosity?
Sure, that's a great question. And so there's sort of tiers of classes from Moody's. So you have the AAA that's the highest, and you've got the AA, AA1, AA2, AA3. Then you go down to single A, A1, A2, A3, and each of those steps is five to 15 basis points, depending on the term of your bonds. Five basis points probably one to five years, five to 10, up to maybe 10 years, and up to 20 basis points if you go the full 20-year of the term. And as an example, for the fiber optic network, PFM always calculates the present value of one basis point, and for the taxable, you know, conduit network bonds, it's almost $12,000 per basis point, so that's real money in savings to have that high rating. And so you take that 12,000 times, you know, five basis points or, you know, 20 basis points, depending on what the other ratings are, that's the money that you're saving.
Okay. Well, it's nice to read their reports because they focus in on what's really important to them, so. Well, thank you, take the rest of the night off, Suzanne, you earned it.
Yeah. All right. Congratulations and thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, item 7D, 1, 2, and 3, I think, Ryan, we got a motion in a second?
Not yet.
All right.
Move. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Those items are approved. Item 7E, issuance of $5,100,000 of general obligation urban renewal capital loan notes, series 2020B. City initiated, we have a motion to receive and file the report of bids and a resolution to authorize and approve the loan agreement, providing for the sale and issuance of bonds and providing for the levy of taxes to be paid by said bonds. And Suzanne reported on those bids, so is there a motion?
Move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Those are approved. Item 7F, issuance of $13,565,000 of general obligation urban renewal capital loan notes, taxable series 2020C. City initiated, also a motion to receive and file the report of bids, a resolution to authorize and approve the loan agreement, providing for the sale and issuance of bonds and providing for the levy of taxes to be paid on said bonds. Suzanne also reported on those bids. Someone want to move?
Move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that item passes as well. 7G, amendment to city code title 5, police regulations, chapter 3, animal control. Clarify definitions and procedures with dangerous and vicious animals. City initiated, this is an ordinance for the first reading, came through Public Safety Council Subcommittee and is really picking up on some of the questions and concerns that we had the last time, we had to deal with one of the vicious animal issues that came before the council.
Move consideration first reading.
Second.
Is there any other questions or comments? You and Matt haven't lived through one of these, so we're doing you a favor.
Thank you.
I'll just say that.
Thank you.
Well, Russ and I are on public safety and we've had this really vetted out.
Downright decent of you.
Yes, so, all right, all in favor of 7G, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Ryan?
Five, yes, and we're submitting city code to the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by amending title 5, police regulations, chapter 3, animal control, to clarify definitions and procedures pertaining to dangerous and vicious animals.
Move approval first reading.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? First reading's approved. 7H, amendment to city code title 6, motor vehicles and traffic, chapter 9, traffic schedules, section 2, through-street stop required, Boonville Road, South 88th Street to Western Terminus, and Cascade Avenue, Jordan Creek Parkway to Western Terminus. City initiated, this also is an ordinance for the first reading and came through Public Safety Council Committee.
Move approval of the first reading.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Ryan?
Five, yes, and we're submitting city code to the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by amending provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? First reading's approved. 7I, amendment to city code title 6, motor vehicles and traffic, chapter 9, traffic schedules, section 3, special stops required, South 88th Street and Cascade Avenue. City initiated, this also is an ordinance for the first reading and it came through Public Services Council Committee.
Move consideration the first.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hey, Ryan?
Five, yes, and we're submitting city code to the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by amending provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
Move approval of first reading.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? First reading's approved. Item 7J, amendment to city code title 6, motor vehicles and traffic, chapter 9, traffic schedules, section 10, special speed zones, Stagecoach Drive, Mills Civic Parkway to Western Terminus, Stagecoach Drive School Speed Zone, 140 feet east of South 93rd Street to 200 feet west of South 95th Street, and Boonville Road, South 88th Street to Western Terminus. City initiated, this also is an ordinance for the first reading and came through Public Services Council Subcommittee.
Move consideration first.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Ryan?
Five, yes, and we're submitting city code to the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by amending provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That first reading is approved as well. Item 7K, low-pressure sanitary service grinder pump retainer contract, city initiated. We have two resolutions and a motion which we can take, take together, and this also came through Public Works Council Committee.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, those items are approved. Item 8, there are no items to receive, file, and/or refer. Item 9, other matters, are there any other matters that any council member wants to raise?
You know, Mayor, I'm just curious, with the savings we heard from PFM, the $311,000 on the debt service levy, any idea what that might equate to, if we have it now or in the future, in terms of our property tax levy rate?
Tim Stiles, Finance Director. I'm trying to think that each penny is about $40,000 of revenue overall, so I'm trying to do the math in my head. Maybe you guys are quicker than me, but it's the end of the long meeting, so.
Yeah.
$300,000 would be seven cents.
Seven and a half cents.
Yeah.
So that will have to get built in next year to the property tax rate, or where does that get built in? And because that's part of our consolidated levy rate?
It's through the debt service levy rate. You're speaking about the general, the couple different things. A and C are essentially repaid through the debt service levy. B was a TIF issuance, which is repaid by funds generated by the Coach Light Urban Renewal Area, so that's a little bit different source of repayments.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Maybe I'll follow up with you.
Okay, no problem.
All right. Thank you.
Any other matters? I guess, Ryan, I'll ask, is there, this, I mean, with some of the stuff that we have going on, it's really hard to, for these meetings, it's frustrating for people. It just doesn't seem like it'd be that hard to unmute something, but people have a challenge with that. Is there a better way to do these? From a technology standpoint? And if there's not, there's not.
I mean, I don't know if these same issues would be with any type of service, but, I mean, we can look at other options.
Yeah, I guess, why don't you, and obviously, you know, we'll need Joe's help. I guess, two things. If this is the best way to handle these meetings when we have COVID, that's fine. I think we just want to know that. And then the second thing is, we really need to get these back on TV. So whatever we have to do to get the next meeting on TV, let's make sure we do it. I keep thinking the last, you know, couple months, it was going to be the next meeting, the next meeting, the next meeting, but I think that's important because I have a number of people ask me when they can start watching them on TV again. They like to see the exhibits we have and whatnot, so if you guys can help with those two items before the next council meeting, I think we would appreciate it, and I know so would the public. And this is a challenge for everybody and we're trying to do the best job we can. And if this is the best setup, until we can get through COVID, that's fine. Let's just make sure that we've done a little bit more due diligence.
Yep. Joe Menke, IT Director, I know we're going kind of long here, just a couple thoughts on that. It is an option for attendees, if they're joining via Microsoft Teams, they can raise their hand, so we could unmute people via raising their hand. And I have a high degree of confidence. I know, Mayor, we set a date here for this meeting and we got things repaired, the hardware that needed repaired, but we're unsure really how to run it, so we're looking here to the next meeting to have that set up. So we had some out of office this last week, which set us back for this meeting, so apologies there.
No, no worries. We're all trying to do the best we can, so, okay.
I'm sorry, I have to say something, and I know it's, I know it's really, really a long meeting, and I just, and I'll make it really, really quick. I just, I just simply have to respond. As a history teacher, just knowing what it's like, what it was like in the Soviet Union, what it was like under communist rule, and the idea that this is like Russia, is, I solemnly and historically reject that in every possible way, because the public meetings that we had, the public meetings that we had, the process that we followed, I think there was some gray air in the process, I will gladly agree to that, and I think there was some disagreement that was done. But that was happened, that occurred up here, but overall, I just, the comments that were made by the citizen, first off, she is welcome to make those comments, and in a different place, in a different time, in a different country, it would be, those comments would not be allowed. And the fact that we have this opportunity for citizens to comment, I have to say, that's what makes our community great, that's what makes our Constitution great, and so I categorically deny what was said regarding the accusations that we were like Russia. I just have to say that, and it's how I feel at this time, so.
No, no, I appreciate it, and quite frankly, I think we go above and beyond to make sure we get public comments. A lot of times, we reopen public hearings where you don't have to. Obviously, people are speaking out of turn, that's a bit frustrating to me when you're trying to run a meeting, but obviously, they, they felt compelled at some point, so, you know, again, I mean, I just ask people to be professional and get to the point, and I appreciate Greg, what you said. I still think, if you look at the substance of what was done tonight, it was right for the right reasons, but we all know people are passionate about their beliefs, and that's fine, too. Renee?
Yeah, I really appreciate this after conversation, because at the end of the day, we may vote, but we're human, and we are servants that are trying to serve West Des Moines, and it's clear tonight that not all of us will agree, and that's why you have five city council people that, from time to time, do not agree, but it's about being respectful in the process, trying to be open, trying not to flare false information, giving clear information, and truly trying to understand the process. That's what we all are charged to do. I want to thank you, Mayor, for your initial comments about this petition that you read, and the comments that were directed at a certain group of people that live in a certain housing element. You categorically rejected those comments as discriminatory. I applaud you for that, because we have to be really careful when we're painting people with a broad brush, and we live in a society where it's difficult for us to understand and that there are different, all different kinds of people that live in this community. And we see one name, and we go and we try to research what we think we want to hear, and we just paint this organization and whatever, and the type of clients or citizens that live in these places as all this or that. We have to stand up for that. We have to stand up against those kind of characterizations that paint people with a broad brush. We should listen to people's concerns and their issues, and where they, what their neighborhoods should be like or not like, but not based on characterizations that marginalize groups of people and put everyone in a bucket. So I applaud you for standing up, saying, "We are voting on this tonight, and these other comments are discriminatory," because others wouldn't say those words. When we see things and hear things, we have to speak it, because silence, as I always will say, is a betrayal. And we do the best we can, we sit in these seats knowing that we cannot make everyone happy, and we never will. But one thing you can count on me is to try to vote. The process as I see it, the best way that I see it, not trying to see who's going to vote against me, who's going to vote, whatever, it's not even about any of that. It's about what's right for West Des Moines, the best you can make, and we're going to have difference of opinion, 3-2 votes, 4-1 votes. That's why we have five people on the council.
And if you look at the people that we serve, historically, there's over 90% satisfaction, which is higher than anyone, almost any other city that ever gets surveyed. So we've admitted we're not perfect, but every two years, and I'll be anxious to get our surveys back this year, I think last year, 93% of our residents were satisfied[1754.82]